Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Block. I'm Chair of the Needham Planning Board and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. We have one public hearing this evening that will include an opportunity for public comment, which is a continuation of a hearing from a previous session for a property located at 40-50 Central Avenue. For the record, I'll now confirm attendance of Planning Board members. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Are we able to turn his volume up a little bit? I'm not sure if that's possible. We're just checking on the technicality, but we're able to do that. That's great. Thank you very much to the Needham Channel tonight for helping us as ever. Artie Crocker.
Here.
Gene McKnight.
Here.
Very nice to see you all. And I believe Natasha is on her way. I don't see Lee.
She texted me that she's having some technical difficulties, so I should be there as soon as she can.
Okay, so I spoke to her 10 minutes, probably 10 or 15 minutes ago. So I anticipate her attendance and I spoke to Natasha earlier today and anticipate her attendance as well. So we'll mark her present when she arrives. And Alex Glee.
Present.
And Alex is present. For those who are participating in this meeting, please be aware that anything you state or share will be a matter of public record and others may be able to see you. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules of this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda after they conclude their remarks. Board members will be asked for any comments or questions or motions. We have additional ground rules governing our public hearings, which I'll review momentarily. This brings us to the first item on our agenda for 705, which is continued hearing relating to major project site plan review special permit number 2022-04 from BTE Development as petitioner to demolish two existing commercial buildings and construct a new mixed-use building with three units of retail consisting of approximately 700 square feet each, give or take, on the first floor and a total of 15 residential units between the second and third floors on the property located at 40-50 Central Avenue. With us tonight are attorney George Jenta Jr. and the developer Paul Bevelacqua. There is the echo. There we go. We're set there. And then I believe we have from MGD Architects Trevor O'Leary, Mariana DeGotti, Ben Carnicelli.
George, I would say Mariana there, is she under a current name?
She...
Under MGD maybe?
She could be sharing in the office. I'm not sure. Trevor or Ben can probably still know.
We see Trevor.
Sorry, I just logged in. If you could repeat the question.
The question is, do we know whether Mariana is going to be able to join us tonight?
I believe she is. She was trying to log in. Yes, she's in. She is in the list of panelists. I don't know if you can add her as a panelist.
What's her name?
Is she under MGD?
Yeah, it would be either MGD or Mariana DeGotti.
All right. MGD one.
Very good. So we've received some correspondence. Page 35 of our packets, we received a note dated November 28, '22 from an anonymous resident with concerns about parking, the bus frequency, encouraging a different trash orientation, and requesting an 8:00 AM construction start instead of a 7:00 AM construction start, and also to try and save some of the existing trees on the site. Although I don't think there are, I think they're all like towards the very back of the site, if there are any on the site.
Down towards Reservoir.
We've also received a number of letters dated in the last week from attorney Jenta. And we've received comments from both the Police Department and from Tom Rider. Attorney Jenta, do you want to pick up for now and we'll get into it?
Sure thing. Sure thing, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you.
All right. So since our last hearing, we did submit a couple of different things, and I'll go through those, both the items we submitted as well as the different points that they address or raise. So first off, you should have received, there was a letter with two additional authorization sort of subletters.
Yes, I saw that.
And that was to address Mr. Alpert's concerns with respect to having the proper parties in the, having signed off on the application. And you'll note, basically, it's all the same people, just in different capacities in the new authorization letters. There was an additional individual, Mr. Jason Tromby, who was the, basically, the nephew of the parties that signed off. There was a concern that he might have an interest, but under the terms of his mother's will, he was specifically excluded from any interest in the property. So he's not a party, he's not involved. So we've got all the proper parties signed off as authorizing the application. So that was one submittal. Then you had a letter submittal from me going over a couple of points, which I'm going to come back to. And last, you had a revised landscaping plan, which I will share with you right now. Yeah, if this works. Okay. All right. So there've been a couple of minor changes to the landscaping plan, and I'm just going to go through these. You should have received a copy in the mail, but it might not have gotten to you in time, depending upon the Postal Service delivery schedule.
I think we sent an email today of the PDF.
Okay. Good, good. So first off, I want to note, along this right side of the property here, along the boundary with the adjacent residential property, there has, a fence has been added, and this is per the comments of the neighbor at the last hearing. As we indicated, we're willing to do a fence there, so that's now been added to the plan that we're doing a fence. Some of the species of the plantings have been changed to incorporate the comments of the Design Review Board. If you recall, they had some specific recommendations as to alternate planting species. We've incorporated those. And then we've added over here, and you can see there's just a couple of little steps here, there is a grade differential between this walk and these parking spaces here, which was not readily apparent at the last hearing. So both to facilitate access and also to make it apparent that there is a grade change there, we've added these few little steps right here. And that actually gets to one of the questions that was raised at the last hearing, which was the location of the handicap parking spaces.
Yes.
So you notice there's a handicap parking space here.
Excuse me.
And then there's two spaces here and here. And the question was raised, well, you know, are those really in closest proximity, shortest path to the front doors essentially? And the question was, could we maybe move them to over here? Well, because of the grade differential, it doesn't really make sense to move them here, because they would actually have to then traverse through the driveway area around...
Where are the other two handicap spots?
So there is one here.
Uh huh.
One here.
Uh huh.
And then one here.
Okay.
And so all three of them are within good proximity to the residential entrance. And then these two spots are in, this is really the shortest path to the commercial, which is from these spots and then up this walk, this ramp walkway around to the front. So after looking at it, we came to the conclusion that actually where they are on the plan is actually the best location for them. It provides the shortest, most accessible path to both the commercial spaces, to the commercial spots, and the residential entrance. All right. And then lastly...
Question on that? Is it okay to ask a question on that?
Sure.
You mentioned a grade differential and a staircase. Why can't there be a ramp instead of a short staircase?
So we would have to redesign this whole sort of area and then basically take out a chunk of the landscaping here to accommodate the ramping.
Okay.
There's such a difference in landscape. How many feet difference is it? I was thinking, imagine just a little curb, you know?
No, it's...
Three feet, I think, three and a half?
Yeah, I'll let the design team maybe answer the exact, but it's three or four steps, so...
But if you spread it over... It's a three-foot difference.
So it's a three-foot difference, but if you have it on a ramp in a parking space, how many feet long?
Eighteen and a half.
So if you spread that out, because it's not a parking spot there, right? So if you spread that out, would that work?
In front of the stairs, it's not a parking spot.
In other words, specifically...
Yeah, but can you have a ramp going into, literally going into the parking spot?
It is, but see, right where your finger is right there, that's a column. That's a support column for the second floor, yep.
Because the building overheads...
Correct, exactly.
Oh, I see.
Exactly.
So the...
So if we were going to create a ramp, it would have to be where, basically, where the walkway is in front of the building? We'd have to do something in that vicinity. And then basically where those steps are would have to be the entrance to the ramp.
The width of that column is two feet, is that correct? And the width of a parking space is eight...
We've got this, um, three chairs hanging on. How do I move that?
Lee, can you hear us?
We can hear you, Lee.
We can also hear you, Lee. In other words, if there's enough width here with the column, why not just extend it, except for the fact that, because you lose, this is not a park...
Or is that the chair swing? Okay. We close it.
Lee, we can hear you. So is my question clear?
I think, I understand your question. I'm not sure if that would comply, having the ramp start out in the parking area.
Yeah.
I'm not an expert in the AABB regulations, but I believe that the ramp can't start from the, basically, the maneuvering aisle.
So the, more the concern is going to be the length of the ramp. So the max slope that we can use for a ramp for the ADA requirements is going to be a 112 slope. To go up that three feet, that's going to require a 36-foot-long ramp.
I see.
And as soon as you go over a 30-foot-long in length, you need to put a landing in the middle of it, which is a five-foot landing. So just...
Now, if you move over...
Streets-wise, it would end us in the middle of the driveway.
What if you moved over five parking spaces to the right? Is the grade the same? Is it another three feet?
So it does, it does go up, and it will slowly go up to approximately where the other ramp is. So this is another ramp that goes up right here.
I don't see, oh, yes.
And so there is about a one-foot difference between this spot here and this spot here.
How do, at those other handicap spots, are they at grade, at the walk grade, or how are they getting into that?
So they're at grade. So at, from, at this point here, is all at grade with the level.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Just, if I were a resident in this building and I needed, I had a handicap, plane needed handicapped access, which is the best, which is the most available spot to park?
So this would be, is mostly set for the residential space. The residential entry is this entry at this location here.
Okay, that's reasonable.
So the handicap spaces, then also, I just want to point out as well that we do have a second entry for all the commercial spaces in the rear of the building that does provide access to every space. That, as much as it's not the primary entrance, it does provide additional access.
Okay. All right, thank you.
George, back to you, if you have any other comments.
All right. And then there was one other thing that was changed on the landscaping plan. The Board of Health had mentioned that with respect to the Pinellas Market in particular, which is a retail food operation, that they likely will need additional trash receptacles. And so we have added, in order to maintain a parking and not lose any additional parking, we've added a trash receptacle over here and reconfigured the location of the transformer. And it's a little tough to see on that screen, but you can probably see it more clear close up.
Are you pointing with a pointer? Should show...
Yes, so it's, can you see the pointer there on the screen?
Part of left of the screen.
Oh, there it is, over there.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So there's an additional enclosure here for two additional trash receptacles, and then there's an enclosure here for the transformer. All right. Transformer previously was located kind of in the same area, but it's been shifted a little bit, and this has just been kind of reconfigured.
Okay. And I remember there being a steep slope, I mean, you know, going south, I guess, from there.
Yes.
And so that wouldn't be near any residences.
Right, right, right. And actually, and that brings us to one of the other questions that was raised at the last hearing, which was with respect to these two, this trash area here, was what was the distance from this to the corner of the adjacent house? And in the letter, I didn't have an exact distance, but in the letter I did indicate it was more than 50 feet, and I now have an exact distance, and the exact distance is 61 and a half feet. So it's a good distance away from the house, certainly, you know, well more than, and some of the trash receptacle areas in the commercial that are adjacent to residential.
So one of the things that I noticed is there are a number of trees, fold trees, at that, at the southern boundary with the other, with the neighboring property. And here, it looks like it's, except for those two on the bottom left of the screen, there are no other trees. It's just kind of a mowed kind of area or some kind of a green area. Are those trees on this property, or do you know for a fact?
I do not know. I don't know if...
I'm not sure if Trevor would know. I have a feeling that they're right over the boundary line.
So I don't think it's actually been staked out on the site, but if you look at the existing conditions plan and then on Google Maps, you can see where the edge of the pavement boundary is. It appears that most of those, if not all the trees, are on the other property, not on this property.
That the, that this property's, this property ends with the cement? And that there are no trees on this property on that southern line?
Correct.
I don't know if there's no trees, but certainly the vast majority are on the neighboring property.
As business, I mean, there's probably a lot of, it's almost a wall-to-wall cement. To some degree, it's a lot of parking heading in that direction. There's got to be...
The site is 90% paved.
Yes.
I mean, there's probably a...
But I wonder if this is part of the 10%.
There's got to be some trees over there.
That's what I'm wondering. So if I'm looking, just for the audience, I guess, I'm looking at Google Maps on my phone and call it up here. You know, you'd see this line. Are you able, is someone able to call up 40-50 or 50 Central Avenue on Google Maps?
Well, I can, I'm calling on Google Maps, but I can also call up in my program where I, where I can literally take off, I can literally show spring shot, fall shot, trees, leaves, no leaves, and so forth, and where, get an idea where the boundaries are and so forth. So I can get an idea of actually where they are.
So then can you go into satellite mode?
This is being, so I don't have things allowed.
I'm looking at the existing conditions plan that was referred to. And it does show, it seems to show vegetation on the site at the top of this, of this, what I refer to as a steep slope. And I can't tell at this scale what the vegetation is, but it looks like there, the surveyor or whoever did this was intending to show various trees or shrubs, and two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, about 18 trees or shrubs along that line.
So, yeah, it does, it does appear as though a couple of the closest to this pavement area are on this line.
Right. Okay. All right. George, you want to continue?
All right, sure. So, all right, so that, those were the changes on the landscaping plan. And one other one, on the one that I just showed you and maybe is on the PDF that you have, also picked up, but it was not on the one that got mailed to you. We've also added on that landscaping plan the interior bike storage. So now, getting back to my letter, one of the points mentioned in the letter is the interior and exterior, but the plan that was mailed out to you had not yet incorporated the interior. I referenced it didn't. Now the plan does.
When you say interior, you mean it's under the overhang, or it's actually inside the building?
It's actually, it's inside the lobby. In the lobby area, we've created a separate room that's a designated bike storage room.
Okay.
So there's bicycle storage both inside and outside.
Okay.
That's great for residents.
Yes, yes. And also good to promote non-vehicle modes of transportation. All right. So now, getting back to that letter that was submitted. So I covered a couple of things in there. First off, just to confirm and put into the record officially, our commitment to some of the sustainability points, the fact that there will be solar on the roof, the building's all electric, there's electric charging stations for up to eight vehicles, there is going to be LED lighting, low-flow fixtures, high-efficiency heat pumps for the units, high-density, efficient insulation, so that the building will be a sustainable, environmentally-friendly building.
When you say, I'm sorry, did you say something?
But not gold, but not LEED certified?
Correct, right, right.
When you say high-density, you're going to use closed foam, spray foam insulation?
Close cell.
Close cell spray foam. Okay, ceilings, walls?
Everything that's required by code, which is the building envelope, so it would be, obviously, the upper ceiling gets insulated as well as all the exterior walls.
So all the insulation you're using is the closed foam, closed cell spray foam?
Closed cell.
Okay. Nice. That will do the trick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So and then in the letter, I addressed the distance to the dumpsters. We've talked about that. And then last is the parking, is that was a question that was raised. And one of the things that was mentioned at the last hearing was the fact that there is on-street parking available in the area. So I went out and I did a canvas to see what, how much and what streets have on-street parking? And as it turns out, both Central Avenue and Reservoir have on-street parking. Now, I personally wouldn't park on Central, but it's technically allowed, except on the southerly side of Central.
Three hours.
This is basically the Newton-bound side, between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, and 4:00 and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, it's not allowed. Of course, the fact that it's posted is not allowed during those hours right there tells you that it specifically is the rest of the time. But more importantly, on Reservoir Street, both on the northerly side, basically heading north from the intersection with Central, and on the south side, on-street parking is allowed on both sides. On the northerly part, heading north from the intersection with Central Avenue, as you go up sort of the slope, I counted approximately 12 to, room for 12 to 14 spaces or 12 to 14 vehicles on that right side going up, and I stopped basically about the middle of the aqueduct. You know, this is the Sudbury Aqueduct that crosses Reservoir Ave.
That's the other side of Central Avenue.
Yeah.
That's right. That's the north side, right. So there's about 12 to 14 spaces on the right side, on the right side, and there's about six to eight spaces on the left side. When I happened to go out there last week, probably 60 to 70% of those spaces were open. There was plenty of available on-street parking. There's also room on, now on the south side of the intersection, on our side of Reservoir, basically beyond where we're proposing to put the six on-street spaces, there's room beyond that for an additional two to three spaces. It would be possible to add two or three more spaces in that area along with the six, but of course, adding those would require the consent or cooperation of the adjacent landowner, because it would reconfigure the sidewalk in that area. Assuming they were agreeable, we could do that. Even if that wasn't changed, there's actually physical room to put at least two more additional cars in that vicinity.
Excuse me, why would it require the approval of the landowner if it's in the public way?
Because we would, we would be altering the sidewalk area on that side, and my understanding has always been, even though it's in the public way, that the town will not embrace making that change to the, basically at the request of one landowner if the landowner with the property adjacent isn't agreeable to it.
Are you effectively saying that a taking would need to be done?
No.
No.
No, this would just, just like what we're proposing, the six spaces in the layout of Reservoir, basically carving out, you know, recessing in, getting rid of the sort of grass strip to create designated on-street parking, this would just extend that further down.
And it would, it would still leave a sidewalk. It would just eliminate the grass strip.
Exactly, exactly, right.
Where is the grass strip?
Well, I'm not sure that there really is one there now, but in theory, when you do a, you know, constructed a sidewalk, you would have to have a grass strip.
Maybe around here, maybe right on the...
I think it's all...
That's south of the site.
I think it's...
But that's what George is talking about.
Right, for those additional spots beyond the six.
Right, right. And then additionally, if you go further down, and it is a little ways down, but further down beyond the end of the property where the Brothers Pizza building is located, sort of beyond the end of their property where their parking is, there's room down at the end there for a couple of vehicles as well, sort of on-street down the end there. So, so there is on-street parking available in the area. And so we looked at that and we evaluated sort of the parking impact. And one of the things that was raised was what's going to be the impact of the commercial users in the building, especially with respect to the employees. And that is a, certainly a valid point, and something that should be addressed. So we looked at it, we looked at this on-street parking, and we thought about it. And our plan is, the three commercial tenants in the building will each be allotted one on-site parking space for employee use. So they'll be restricted just to one space. If they have, if they have more than two employees at any given time, they will have to, and this will be a condition imposed as a part of their lease arrangements, they will have to come up with a parking plan for off-site parking using either off-site location, public transportation, carpooling, something that does not therefore impact the property or the area. Now, I say more than two, because presumably, if they have only one employee, one employee can utilize the on-street parking without having a significant impact to the neighborhood or to the area.
You use the on-street parking or you use the designated, designated spot? The designated spot? Are you talking about, is a designated spot in, within the property bounds? Is that...
There'll be one designated employee spot for each commercial tenant onsite.
Onsite.
And then what I'm saying is if they have an additional, so for example, and part of this is also based on, the type of uses that are allowed in the zoning bylaw for this district are pretty restrictive and pretty limited, and they are the type of uses that generally do not feature lots and lots of employees. They're not sort of, you know...
How many employees does Pinellas have now?
I believe that they have anywhere from two to four, depending upon the shift in the day and so on.
So their maximum shift, they probably have four. And they're not looking to really downsize their space that much, right? They're going to continue with the same, a similar operation?
Similar operation. The physical size is probably a little less, because...
Right.
What they're in now is bigger than what the spots will be. It's also bigger than what they need, right? Because Pinellas now is not what it used to be.
But it was.
Right? It used to be an actual sort of market, like almost a convenience store, and now it's more of a food retail sort of limited use. More narrowly tailored use, right?
And remind me again, how many parking spaces per unit?
So the bylaw, the bylaw requires generally one and a half per unit, although with respect to the affordable units, it, we're allowed to reduce it down to one space.
So the total number of parking spaces for residents?
So there are 28 spaces on-site. That will leave 25 spaces available for residents and, residents, guests, and customers.
And we had a comment, Lee, is Lee still with us?
Lee is having trouble. She's trying her husband's computer. I don't know.
I can, I can speak. Can you hear me? I just can't, for some reason, my camera is just not working.
All right. So we'll, well, we can hear you in the shadows, Lee.
Okay, sorry, I have no idea what's going on.
Not to worry, these things happen. So we, we had a comment from the Police Department raising a question about the, about the parking. I'm just going to try and quickly call that up. I don't know if I'll be able to.
Sort of, yeah.
Here it is. So the comment from the Chief Schlittler was, "I do hesitate on parking and feel it is an unfair assumption that people will be returning to work, which will open spots during the day. I think the approval of the six street parking spots would help, even though they can't be used in the calculation. If these streets..." If these street spots are not approved, then I think we would have to look at this again." Lee, what's required to approve six spots on the street? Is that something that DPW does, or is that within our?
Um, that's something that DPW would have to go along with.
So, I mean...
And DPW has no problem with the plan as it's been presented, so I don't know that it's a problem.
And if it helps, Mr. Chair. So the concept of those spaces was specifically discussed in a meeting with DPW, so they were, actually a large part of why we went forward with that was because they were receptive to having those spaces.
So the town would create six spaces, which effectively becomes overflow for you or for the property adjacent across Reservoir on the other side of Reservoir?
Right. Although, just to, we will actually build them.
Right.
The selectmen will just have, the selectmen will authorize.
Right.
Right.
That's an improvement to the town.
Yes.
I understand. Okay, do you have anything else?
Uh, let's see, so, I think that addresses, that responded to all the questions and concerns that came up at the last hearing.
We had an email from Tom Ryder, a town engineer. Have you had a chance to review that?
I have, I have.
And are you okay to have, to include those as conditions, as he's recommended in our decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There was nothing, those were, to me, I would call those sort of standard comments.
Okay, so before we go to the public, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any comments. Paul, do you have any comments on the plan or anything new?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Artie?
Quick question, so, so obviously, someone obviously in Reservoir Street, right now it's above ground, all the power is above ground going through that parking spot area, so the plan is to put it below ground? Once they remove the poles, what's the plan for that parking area? Because the poles look like they're kind of in the middle of the parking right now.
So all the utilities will be shifted below ground? So you're talking about the existing overhead wires that run on the building?
Uh, the existing overhead wires that are running along Reservoir Street.
Uh, well, if there are existing N-Star or, I believe that's N-Star, those lines we won't be changing, we can't change. But although, any of the lines that come off into the property?
Be underground in a conduit.
Well, no, I can appreciate that, again, I'm just, I'm just cutting it off, you know, asking the question now because it's going to come at some point. I'm just looking at where the telephone poles are, and I'm looking at the plan that you have, and it looks like a telephone pole is literally right in between some parking spots. So I just want to kind of head off what might be happening there. If you can see, if you can look at it, you can see the pole, you can see the shadow. If you look on the street, street view from Google, you can see the telephone pole, what's going on. So I'm having a little hard time to kind of imagine what's happening if that telephone pole stays there, or doesn't get shifted, shifted over away from them.
Well, certainly if it's in the way of the new designated parking, if the pole would be moved, we have to coordinate that with the electric company.
So, but that's, but that's, that's what will happen. The pole will be moved, so we're not going to, it won't put, it won't go underground, poles will simply be shifted.
Correct.
Okay.
Were you able to share your screen, or is that what you're looking to do?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, sorry, my apologies, Mr. Chair, I'm just looking a little closer at where the building is, where the wires fall and so forth like that. Yeah, no, I like the plan, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, it's great for the, it's great for the town, it's great for the area, I think it's, you put a lot of thought into it, I like the fact. So the trash receptacles were moved, they were talking about, you know, more, you know, having that volume, but they're also talking about proximity to the market where the trash receptacles would be, and that looks like it brings them a little closer to where they're talking about right there. No, I like it. I can't think of anything else right now, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and Natasha?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, Jean?
Um, I understand that, I've been looking at the old landscape plan and then the one that was recently distributed, and you said, I think, George, that a choice of trees and so forth was changed to respond to the Design Review Board.
Yes.
It appears that the location of the trees is the same, I don't actually see any difference in the number of trees or location of the trees, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It was, it wasn't the number or location, it was the type of planting. In particular, Design Review called out that some of the originally, some of the species that were originally proposed maybe required more maintenance and therefore were more likely to have issues sort of long-term, and they suggested species that were more hardy required less maintenance and therefore more likely to thrive and survive over the long term.
But when I look at the two plans, I look at this one, which was what was transmitted by email today, I didn't get the original in the mail, and I look at the one SP dot O six, the initials that describe each tree are exactly the same.
I think the initials stayed the same, but if you look at the descriptors, on the right-hand side, there's like a table that runs along.
Oh, okay.
I believe that was changed.
Oh, I see, I thought the, I'm afraid I cannot read it, at the scale I have, it's just impossible to read. Could you give me an example, like J D W? What was it before, what is it now?
Hello?
Yes?
So, I'm Ben Carnaselli, I worked on the landscape plan.
Oh, thank you, okay.
So the Japanese dogwoods were originally proposed, and the Design Board had said that it was a good choice, but we should try and add some variation, and they proposed adding the Florida dogwood, which in the new plan, some of the old Japanese dogwoods had been substituted out with Floridas.
Um, so when I see this plan in a readable form, or I look at it on a computer where I can, where I can focus on it, I would see the changes, and they, you're saying that they do comply with the suggestions of the Design Review Board?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I will take your word for that, and of course, by the time we actually have a decision to approve, I'll just make sure of that.
Do a double check.
I'll do my double check, okay, thank you.
Very good. There's no one here with us physically that has their hand up to speak on this. Is there anyone at home that would like to comment on this? I noted earlier that we received an email, our correspondence from an anonymous resident on November 28th. I don't see anyone with their hand up. This is the full list of attendees, is that right? So we'll give this another minute. There was a comment that the traffic demand system proposed was comprehensive, but it really just includes only the bike storage and a brochure, probably about the bus line, which to me isn't really that comprehensive. What other reasonable measures can you undertake to help facilitate additional modes of transportation to this site? And being a cyclist, I'm not so sure cycling is really the best way to, you know, to and from unless you're in the immediate area.
Well, so that's sort of a, I mean, a larger question in terms of how can you facilitate alternative transportation generally, is always a challenge. You know, having, I do think that the fact that the bus stop is right there in front of the building is probably, is a practical matter, one of the most likely factual things, factual elements that would lead people. Certainly, as somebody who used to utilize the Green Line quite a bit, it was always a pain to drive to any of the Green Line locations at certain times of the day or night and get a parking space. So if I could have just hopped on a bus right out my door to get to the Green Line, I would have done that in a heartbeat.
I get it, and unfortunately, you know, the number 59, the 59 bus is not a frequent, is not a frequent bus, it's not really a practical solution, that's beyond your control, that's MBTA. I'm not saying that isn't your control, I am saying that it does, I mean, the site does present challenges, in particular with, you know, with parking. I think you've done as good of a job probably as possible, and we have the town engineer, you know, who's effectively consented to the, you know, to the plan. Lee, are there any other items that are outstanding on this?
No, I think that we've covered them.
So is the board satisfied to take a vote to close the hearing?
There's one issue, although I don't like it, that somebody sends us comments anonymously. An issue was raised, which is a reasonable one in an area that abuts a residential area, and that is the start time for construction. What is our typical start time for construction in such circumstances?
Lee, that's probably for you.
Yeah.
Um, I think we vary, I mean, we have, varied it as a function of where the project is located, I'm just trying to...
Exactly, seven is reasonable in many locations, but I wonder if it's reasonable...
But we have, but we have gone later for some projects in the neighborhoods. I could look at a couple of decisions and let you know, Jean, we answered that.
I think a very relevant one is the multifamily housing that was constructed just recently on Honeywell Street. That would be a good comparison, because that did abut residential area.
Fine, I'll pull that decision right now and let you know what it says.
Well, we can, we can address, we can address that by condition.
Yes, certainly, but I wanted to bring out any facts about that
I see.
Before the hearing, hearing was over.
Yes.
So if I may, so I would actually distinguish, because Honeywell Street was actually had dense residential right next to it and across the street. In this location, we have commercial on three sides.
True.
And we have a single residential, there is a house next door, the gentleman who was here at the first hearing
Yes, exactly.
Was very supportive of the project. So this isn't quite the same situation as Honeywell, where it was kind of in the middle of a denser residential area.
So you know Honeywell was seven, seven to five, Monday through Saturday.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Mr. Chair, just one question, for the bicycle storage, you know, more and more people have electric bikes. Is, I take it there'll be outlets in the bike storage area?
Oh, sure, I mean, that's...
That's required anyway, probably.
Yeah, every, I believe, 12 feet on a wall, linear footage, we've got to have outlets anyway. Most people would, I would imagine, would charge in their units, but they'll also be able to charge in the lobby.
Okay, in the bike storage area?
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, I don't see anyone from the public with their hands up, so at this time, I think I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Sorry, so just one, one last thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just one last, have we seen the rooftop area, what the rooftop area looks like with mechanicals in the rooftop area? Have you, is that part of the plan?
No, you, we have not, because you...
Are the heat pump units, what's going on the roof? Are the heat pump units on the side, outside, where are the heat pump units? Mechanicals basically?
I believe the plan is for the roof where the heat pumps.
For the roof, okay.
Right.
The residential?
Yep, Trevor can chime in on that.
Yeah, it was our intention to put all the heat pump units on the roof, however, we do have a small cornice and a parapet right on the top, and the location of them would be back towards where the elevator shaft is, with the intention that from the street, they would essentially be invisible, they would be set back enough that you would not notice.
Also, to try to efficiently use the space, so when you do put solar on, you're not breaking up, you're not fragmenting the space.
Exactly, yeah.
Correct, to be as, yeah, as close as we can to the access way as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all, thank you, appreciate it.
Very good. I'll then go back to entertaining a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing on this application.
We have a motion and a second by Artie. Any discussion, hearing nine will come to the vote. Paul, you're up.
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we have unanimously decided to close the hearing. Thank you very much, we'll look forward to the decision, and best of luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you all very kindly. Thank you.
This takes us to the second item on our agenda, which is continuing deliberation of 557 Highland Avenue in respect to the major project site plan special permit number 2022 dash O two. I do note for the record, and Lee, thanks for re-including it, or Alex for re-attaching it, we have a letter from our town engineer dated, an email rather, dated November 15th describing that the sewer flow, Jean, in answer to your question, in response to some comments that we've received from residents, that the sewer flow from this site flows in the opposite direction to no one net. So this really brings us to the draft decision. I've provided Lee with my comments, which were really, I guess I would regard as non-substantial, non-substantive comments. There are a couple of other comments that I have. One is, Lee, I believe the applicant has prior agreed to a LEED gold status, and we have, I think in our decision, we say a LEED silver, so if you could make that change, that would be helpful. You know, the garage is something that we're, you know, that we'll talk about in a moment. I would ask my colleagues that if you have any comments that are non-substantive-based, to just send them directly to Lee, so she can incorporate into, as appropriate, into the next draft. And that the time here is really to address any of the substantive elements, the garage will come to, but are there other, are there other comments that my colleagues have on the draft? I'll start, I guess, in alphabetical order with Paul?
No, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, Artie, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, you're satisfied with the draft?
Yeah, I read through it, and I saw things related to BioLab 1 and 2.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that.
Limitations specifically.
The limitations, so, but I saw that, I saw the notation about, they said silver, and I was thinking, well, they definitely said gold, so that's a good, yeah, I saw the pickup on that one. Yeah, no, it's, I don't have any comments, sorry, no.
Natasha, do you have any comments?
I guess my only comment is, and I need to review again one last time what Lee wrote about the rooftop screen on the side on Highland Avenue.
Well, we can talk about that tonight.
Yeah.
On Highland Avenue, not Gould.
Well, and then Gould, and then the Gould, the garage, which is what we're going to talk about.
Yeah, exactly.
But just, in general, just the screenings, to have some depth.
I'm just making a note.
I'm trying to get it, but I don't have good internet right now.
Okay, Jean, did you have other?
Yes, the one comment I have, I was expecting that we might see precise data on the amount of landscaped open space. The dimensional requirements for this site require a minimum of 25% of lot total area to be open space, and then there are certain, what's not permitted in the open space, you know, no buildings or structures of any kind, access streets, ways, et cetera, et cetera. The application merely said, it had a little symbol that means more than, 25%, but I was hoping that we would be provided with an actual square footage of open space.
So, Lee, is that something we can accommodate in a modification, site plan modification? So, Lee, is that something we can accommodate in a modification, site plan modification?
Yes, and Gene, actually, and maybe I was, I didn't get this out to you. I had asked that of Tim Sullivan, and he had provided me with some additional information on open space. And essentially, I think they had open space at 38%, which was, I think, 13% higher than was required. And he actually had given me a plan which detailed this information that you're talking about, which I will share with you, so.
Then if that data can be incorporated in the decision, I didn't see it there now.
If we can include...
I can add that into the decision, and I can ask that the zoning table actually be revised to reflect it.
But I think more, yes, and I suppose, but we can also just make it a finding, right?
We could make it...
I think what Gene's saying is that she'd like to have it actually, the zoning table was really very general, and it had like a greater than number, and I think she wants these numbers called out specifically. And so they provided them. I don't see any reason why we can't ask to have them reflected on the drawing.
Okay.
All right. And then there's a provision with regard to a post-construction landscape architect plan that is required to be submitted. And I think that should include that the landscape architect says in that that it exceeds the 25% of what the square footage is, very clearly.
Okay, on the asbill?
Yes, on the asbill, right.
Yeah, when I use my software, I did a calculation on open space, and when I subtract off the, let's say, the fire lane, it was coming out to the low 30s, which, and so it was clearly above, yeah, it was clearly above what it was supposed to be. So I was like, I mean, I was a little surprised, because I was happy that it was clearly above.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, a 10-foot wide plus additional 5 minutes high fitness pad.
That's very helpful, Artie, thank you.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was around 32, 33%, somewhere around there, 34%.
Gene, do you have anything further?
No.
Okay. So, so then I guess let us chat about this, about screening for the main building, Natasha, for the north and the south building, and then also, and then we'll come to the garage. Lee, just because you're, you know, you're probably so intimate with this decision, can you call out a page on the decision that we can look at that deals with the screening of the building?
Well, the plan modifications actually were covered under section 2.0. So I think it's on page 26 is where it begins. And I think I called out, I think the first paragraph there calls out...
The notch?
Yes, calls out, I think, for the revisions to be made to the plan, Natasha, that were presented on, at the planning board meeting on September 7th and October the 3rd.
So I'll specifically just mention that at page 26.
Paragraph A.
2.0 sub-paragraph A. The plan to be revised to show the following updates, et cetera. Update the elevation as follows. Create a third floor setback to emphasize the two-story punch window massing. Add third floor material change and sun shades to emphasize the facade. Create a notch at mid-block of Highland facade and added outdoor balcony space. Create a notch at the corner of the Highland facade to soften the corner. And articulate the roof screening with materiality to transition to the sky. Adjust glass extents on Gould Street elevation of the north building to align with the bumpout. Consolidate footprint of the atrium between north and the south building. So is that satisfactory to you?
So my thing is, yeah, that all sounds good. My concern was that it was just a flat wall, even if you changed the material, so having any...
But they're putting in the notches, too.
Up in the screen?
Well, they're putting that up through, up at the building, I think, on the third floor.
Right, but not the screen. So the screen is a straight line for the entire facade.
So Natasha, how would you want, what kind of condition would you like me to add there?
I think all of what you said was fine. It was just, I think we also need to, you know, look at the materiality and look at the depth of it to create, you know, a little, some differentiation. Right now, it's kind of just a flat. It's just the material is changing.
So you want them to bump, to bump a couple of, two or three feet in?
Well, the thickness, the material could have thickness to it, too, right? It could be corrugated. It could be something that, that... Right now, it's just perforated. It's what it looks, and maybe it's more than that, but just, do you see that image right here?
Which one?
See how it's just kind of straight?
Yes.
Versus the building. So if there could be a depth change in that material, I mean, it goes around the entire building as a flat with perforations, which is, which is good. It's just a matter of, there's differentiation in the building, and the windows create shadows and everything. And the screen is just a straight screen.
Okay, so...
So just the detailing of the screen, if we could get more information on the detailing of the screen to make sure that it has depth as well as the materiality.
So do you want me to add a condition that basically says that the screen material shall be modified to provide more depth? I mean, how do you want, how do you want the condition to read as relays to the screen?
So I'm just, just for the record, the applicant's attorney, Tim Sullivan, is here. And first, I just want to respond to Natasha. So Lee had just asked a question. Are you okay if we ask Tim how we can accommodate that?
I'm just trying to clarify one thing.
Can you talk to the mic, otherwise nobody else can hear you.
Sure, happy to.
Thank you for coming forward. Yes, please, thanks very much.
So one of the clauses you just read, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Says articulate the roof screen with materiality?
Yes, correct.
My only suggestion was that might be the place to do it.
Right.
Right.
So it might just be that Lee can...
With depth and materiality.
Something like that. Might just be where you suggest doing it.
Yes.
Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's just basically a flat screen around the whole.
Yeah, I think it, I think that was a comment you made at the hearing, and I think that was probably what this was intended to capture, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's...
Are there words that need to be added, and just if you can understand what those words should be?
I think it's probably depth.
Materiality and depth.
Depth and materiality, so that it is not in a single plane. Is that not helpful?
You know, I'm talking to an architect here, so.
With items, small Roman 05?
Yeah, 2A5.
Correct.
Yep.
Depth and materiality, but Roman, no, it's not Roman 05.
It's Roman 5.
It's a number, small 2, add third floor material change and sun shades. Is that, is that satisfactory?
That's already present.
I mean, is Natasha suggesting, and I really rely on her as our architect member, is number 2 that says add third floor material change and sun shades to emphasize the facade, is that sufficient?
That's the third floor, so that's fine.
Okay.
It's just, it's just the...
It's just articulate...
Articulate roof screen with depth and materiality.
So it's not, so it's not to present in a single plane?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that's dealt with. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Paul, you concur with that? Okay. Paul, sorry that you're under the weather.
You feeling any better, Paul?
Not really, Artie.
I'm sorry, man.
I will try to continue to get through this for you. Artie, you're okay with that?
Yeah, we were just talking about that, yeah.
Natasha, you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that change, yes. I have another issue or question. I understood that we were going to make some changes to address the garage height.
Yes, we're not quite there.
Oh, well, all right, all right.
Okay, we're almost there. We're like 20 seconds away from there. So, okay, so we've, so we're resolved on the wording for, to capture the screening, that takes care of that comment. And Gene, we're resolved in your comment with respect to the open space calculations. We'll make a modification to the zoning table on the site plan, and then specifically identify what the number is in the decision. And then now, I guess, we'll come to, come to the garage. And did you want to speak to some points?
Oh, just that we received an email saying that the developer will clarifying that the applicant is willing to work with the board to address the garage height. And the applicant has been very responsive to concerns that have been made by the board with regard to the design and layout of the site, so I'm very glad to hear that. But the decision right now in its draft form doesn't include those changes.
There was just a spot called out so we could deal with it, which is what we're going to do, I think, now.
Okay.
So specifically, as Gene was mentioning, we've received clarification from, from the developer in an email today identifying that, that the applicant is prepared to work with the board, and specifically is saying that they're prepared to agree that the height of the garage on the portions of closest to Gould Street would be reduced from 55 feet to 48 feet, and would present as four levels above ground. And that, and that they're, the parking spaces, ultimately, they're preserving the same number of parking spaces. They're making up those parking spaces, I think, by digging, by digging, adding another level below. Well, no, below grade. And then they'll be able to restripe and reconfigure the parking space layout within the modified garage. And restripe or reconfigure the parking space layout within the below grade parking underneath the north and south building. And they'll do other things, maybe it could be, you know, tandem parking and so forth, and other means that makes sense, so they can retain the 1,390 parking spaces. So effectively, they're, I think they are doing a diligent job to accommodate us so that on Gould Street, it's not presenting as the fifth level.
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify some definition, because, you know, the parapet height is coming into place. So when you're talking 48 feet, we're talking 48 feet to the top of the wall, correct? Not to the, not to the floor plus the parapet. We're talking 48 feet to the top of the wall.
So the parapet is not included in the count, in the height calculation in our zoning BioLab?
No, I understand the parapet can be something added, but I'm talking about being presented as 40, we're saying being presented as a 48-foot structure.
Where's the 48 feet?
Yeah, I'm not looking at 48 feet, I'm not looking for this thing to be 48 feet at the, at the floor, then add another five feet to it, all of a sudden we have a 53-foot structure.
So it's, from my understanding, the calculation of the height is consistent with how we determine the height across all of our similar structures. And on that basis, of the front side on Gould Street, that 48 feet is calculated from at grade on the Gould Street side. And it will be to, you know, to the, you know, to the deck of the parking structure.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, but that's what I'm saying, I understand. Then the, then the quote, then the wall, which could be, which could be considered, which is, in some cases, some people consider a parapet. And I understand how it could be looked upon that way. I can appreciate that. But I'm looking at this thing as, you know, are they, you know, what are they actually reducing it? You know, that means before, it was more like a, almost a 60-foot structure before, and so...
So I, so...
58, 60, so...
I mean, and we've also heard people, you know, comment that, you know, this is a 1 million square foot, you know, FAR project as well. So, Lee, how has the, how is the town calculating that height? And is this consistent with, you know, with how we measure the height in other similar structures?
I spoke with Dave Roach about this, and he viewed the wall on the garage as a parapet. And he felt that as long as its height did not exceed the five-foot limit, that it was, that it would comply with, that it would comply with zoning.
And so, Paul...
He had reached out, I think, to Mr. Schlegler, because he couldn't find a specific dimension on the parapet height on the plans. And they were in the process of confirming that it was actually under the four-foot limit. And I actually had a conversation with the architect on the project late this afternoon, who told me that, that the parapet wall that was being proposed, I think, was somewhere between 3.6 feet and four feet tall. But we don't have a confirmed dimension on the plan.
Okay, so...
So may I just throw in a kind of an explanatory comment? Without any special permit as to the height of the garage, it's allowed to be 44 feet plus a parapet, if not more than five feet. Now, the original application, I don't recall if it was as high as 55.
It was.
Okay, so the application was for 55 feet, and we've asked for a compromise on that. And it appears that the applicant is agreeable to a condition that would reduce the maximum to 48 feet, and it would be plus a parapet. Yep.
But what was the, but what was the height, but the height before?
55.
It was 55 plus the parapet.
Yeah, but it was, but it was 55 feet to the floor, plus maybe it's a tad more than that to the parking floor. Now they're reducing one level. Now, if they're reducing one level, you know, for example, what was the level of the fourth floor before? It almost sounds like they're raising the parking, they're taking off a floor, but they're raising the parking garage, then adding the parapet.
They're getting rid of seven feet, basically.
So is, does that mean, does that mean each level is, I just want to confirm, each level is seven feet? We're taking off a level. Is it seven feet?
No.
So, so if they took off a level, if they just simply took off a level, what would be the height of the parking structure?
So we'd have to pull up the plans here, I'm just...
Is it sounds like a level is coming off, but also the whole garage?
Configuration may be changing.
And, and they're also, they're also handling, you know, several different things. First of all, the parking structures are really on an uneven plane, on an uneven horizontal plane because of the ramp structure.
No, I understand that, but the reason we're reducing the height is because of the visual massing. So what I'm, what I'm looking for, what is the actual difference, differential in the visual massing? It sounds like it's maybe seven feet. It's not one level, it's seven feet.
The difference in the height excluding the parapets, because it's the floor to the floor that you're talking about effectively, is the delta between, is the delta between 55 minus 48? So it's a seven feet that...
Yeah, but that's less than what, I just want to make sure what we're talking about, so well that everyone knows what's going on. So if, so the delta is seven feet, but the height of one level of parking is not seven feet, correct? It's more like, it's more like 10 feet?
Right, but the average of the building, based on when you remove one, changes to be the seven feet. It's not apples and apples when you just take it off.
So on the front of it, so on the visual on the front, if they just take one floor off, it wouldn't be essentially just one level coming off? It would just be a seven-foot differential?
Maybe you can...
So I'll ask, I'll ask Tim to come to the microphone to explain.
So I think one thing that might not, that was in my email, but might not have come through, is that we would be resubmitting a modified plan in accordance with what I was clarifying in my email. So that would come back to the design review board and the planning board, and this level of detail would be on that. So this is really just to say that, I agree with the way height's been suggested by the board and Lee and Natasha, that it would be a seven-foot difference from what was proposed. But my point that I want to make sure is very clear is that that plan would come back to you to see. So these are design guidelines to address the comment that we heard. So that was the only clarification I wanted to make.
It would be no greater than the 48 feet.
Correct, as measured by the BioLab, which has been articulated right there.
But the height of, but, but it's still starting at the same elevation. It's still...
So, so height of entrance is still starting at the same elevation? And then the, each floors are still, still the same height? And now it's one less floor, or is it starting at a different elevation? It starts at the average grade around the building.
It's still, it's still starting at the same elevation as it was. The entrance is still the same elevation. I just want to make, I understand that.
The entrance should be at the same elevation because you have to grade it to be, so it's at the same level. It's just that the relationship to the ground.
But something's changing in back. So I wasn't sure if that changed and changing in back is changing the front, is pushing it up?
No, no. Just, it's just the says.
You have to come in at the same level.
Seven feet off the five.
I think that the reason why they're putting this is until they actually do it, they can't tell you exactly what it is. And it's the relationship to the grading.
Okay.
So I expect, I expect generally speaking, that the floors, that the height between the floors would remain at the, would remain at, generally speaking, that 10 feet between the floors. I don't think that they're keeping, they're, they're not preserving the original height and then just kind of shortening and then expanding it after. So now, another element that Natasha had brought up, not just, not just the height of the garage was the screening. And to that end.
Before we depart from the height though.
Yes.
I want to point something out that's a little bit vague. And that is, in, in the letter from, or the memo from Tim Sullivan, it says that it's the parking garage closest to Gould Street would be reduced to no greater than 48 feet and four levels, recognizing that the building height and levels closest to Route 128 could remain as initially proposed. So I'm not sure where the, where you draw the line.
Well, I think that, we're, the context for this is we're, we're responding to.
Concern of the view from Gould Street.
Correct. And so, and so, you know, the board didn't really have, you know, have a problem with the, the perspective of the garage from, from the 128 on, off ramp. So, and there is that still that topography change, you know, towards that bowl. So, so if it's 48 feet in the, in the front, the depth of the garage and the slope down, it may, you know, it may, and with the grading, it may ultimately be higher in the rear of the, you know, of the rear of the garage towards 128, but not visible from Gould Street.
I just think that the condition should be very clear, a little bit more clear than it is in this number one. So that it's very clear what the, the revised plan has to show.
So I'll ask Tim to, to give that clarity.
Yeah, so Jean, I think the answer is we don't know exactly where that line is yet, which is why it would be a guideline that we'd have to submit back to you to take a look. So I think what Adam mentioned is that, and you mentioned, yes, the intention is to soften the, the view from Gould Street has been articulated, but that's why it's a design guideline that has to come back.
So in other words, so just so I'm clear, we're going to create a design guideline as a condition in our decision that will address the height of the garage and the screening. And that subsequently to the decision, after we voted on the decision, and as you're in further pre-construction mode and you're continuing to finalize the architectural plans and the engineering plans, you'll then come back to the design review board with the specifics that relate to the height.
To the design review board, not the planning board?
Well, I'm not done yet. So to go to the design review board and to the planning board, that will address both the exact details of the, of the height of the structure at the front and the back and all sides. And then in addition to that, addressing the screening, which I was just about to get to. Okay?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay? So then on that basis, the, the screening that they're, that they're modifying would be a mix of methods, including landscaping, including mature trees and in particular vines of vegetation, which were some of the things that you had talked about for the purposes of screening the garage. And then use of metal tubing and mesh screening, which I think were other specific suggestions Natasha that you had had, and other materials to enhance the aesthetic and minimize, minimize the visual impact of the garage. So those are the substantive changes. Are you satisfied with, with that? So Lee, do you have what now you need in order to make this, to include this, incorporate this into our decision?
Yeah, so that's what the board, yes. And I think the other, the other piece of that is the adjustments to the parking, to maintain the parking at the level that was originally proposed and that the rearrangement of the parking, so that any additional spaces that are created are all underground. That's what my understanding is. And I think that's what the board's intent is. I can certainly modify the decision to accomplish that goal.
So I think we're satisfied with that, Jean, are you satisfied?
With that garage height issue, yes. As I scanned through my notes on, marginal notes on the decision, I do have one more issue I want to mention.
So we'll come to that in a moment. But on the garage, you're satisfied with this approach?
Yes, thank you.
I'm satisfied, Natasha, you're satisfied already?
It just, it just, I mean, I get it, I want to be satisfied. It just sounds as though the height of the garage is, is the height in the front of it, the Gould Street side, there's some reflection increased height because of what's going on on the 128 side. Is if this was, is, I understand when you enter the parking garage, perhaps you're going up from, from Gould Street, perhaps you're, you're going up as you're driving into the second level. But it almost sounds as though the height of the, height of, again, Gould Street side is being, is staying higher because of what they want to try to keep accomplishing on the 128 side. Is if it was truly reduced by one story, then why isn't the overall height reduced, reduced by one story? It's not, it's being reduced by, I think it's being reduced by less one, less than one story.
Artie, I just want to say that I think that the, as of right is 44 feet. Is that right, Lee?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
This is only asking four feet above that, but they used to have 55.
Well, remember, you know, remember up until 10 minutes ago, or, or when we had some, some conversations, the parapet, or the, I mean, essentially the wall around the parking garage, which is part of the structure, was considered simply a wall, part of the structure. Now it's, now it's being, now it's being considered a parapet. And I can appreciate the, I can appreciate the nuance there, I can get that. But that means it's three and a half to four feet higher. So the, I mean, as right may be 44 feet, but this, this is 48 feet plus potentially four more feet. So all of a sudden we're at 52 feet.
As opposed to I guess 55 plus 4 is 59 feet.
We're at 52, well, yeah, okay, so we're seven, so we're seven feet less, we're not, we're not one, we're not one floor less. We're not one floor less.
One, well, it all depends on what the floor levels are.
And in particular.
But we're not one, but the point is we're not one floor less.
Well, we, from, from Gould Street, which is the, which is, I think I have.
Yeah, I mean, that was the concern, what is the visual massing?
Right, so what.
Only seven feet less, we're not one story less.
So from this intersection. It's going to look, where'd my pencil go? It's going to look like, man? Just because you have a thicker marker as opposed to my tiny little pen. It's, oh, this might be a little dry Natasha. Artie, can you see? So this will be eliminated. All of this will be eliminated. And for those at home, I'm just on page 19. And then this part of it, thank you very much.
Seven feet will be eliminated. It's in one, one.
But the story, it's going to be four stories from Gould instead of five. It says that, it says that in their email, that it's going to be four levels instead of five.
I understand that, but the four, but if there truly was four levels coming off.
So then this comes down, this comes down as well substantially?
You know, that, that means technically, that means if it's no longer five, that means technically the building ends at this wall height. If it's truly, if it was ending at this wall height before, that means technically it's now ending at this wall height. There's the, but it doesn't sound like, that doesn't sound like what's happening.
It's, it's three feet above that. So if that, if that was 44 feet and we don't, and we don't have it in front of us.
It's not three feet above that.
This is the floor level.
That's the floor level, that's the parapet.
Yeah, right, so the parapet's four feet above.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's where it should be, that's where it should be ending. But it doesn't sound like it's ending there. It sounds like it's ending, I don't know, three feet above there, somewhere along there.
Okay, well.
Or four feet, whatever.
I, I understand that you hold a different perspective on it.
No, no, it's not a different perspective, it's math. It's simply, it's mathematics. The math, the mathematics says that if it's one story coming down, it's essentially, if the stories are 10 feet, it's essentially 10 feet lower. If it was 58 feet before, it's, that means.
They may need to reconfigure it and that's why they're giving each other, themselves leeway to do max 48. I, I don't know, I mean, this is what.
And then they're also going to come back to us for our.
I understand that, but we're giving, but in our, in our approval, in our vote, we're giving approval for 48 feet.
Up to 48 feet, yes.
Anyway.
On, on the front.
But we would be getting, we would be getting drawings to review.
And four stories.
Okay, no, I can appreciate that. I just, I'm, I'm voicing it because I just want to make sure this, the goal was to visually reduce the massing on Gould Street by one, essentially by one story. I just want to see if that, would that being accomplished? That's the goal, is that's what people are looking for. They're looking for something, some compromise, and the compromise was one story. And luckily, they're able to find the parking. They're able to find the parking. And so I think, you know, everyone will be equally happy or unhappy, whatever, something like that. But as long as we can accomplish the, reduce the visual massing by one story. And that's, and the 48 feet doesn't do it for me, that's all.
Okay, so I understand your position, that's okay.
They'll try to do better, but they have a maximum of 48 in case that's what ends up.
And wait, and it may, and on this issue, and then Paul, are you okay with, with the rest of us, with this as a solution?
I certainly am.
Okay, thank you. So, so, you know, when we vote the decision, if you're, you know, you may vote against that one.
No, I'll probably, no, I will probably be okay with this, but then when it comes back, we'll be.
You want to review it?
Yeah, yeah.
When it, when, like, after we've completed the decision? Okay. So do, do my colleagues have any other comments on the decision you did, Jean?
Section 3.16 on page 29 addresses lighting. But it doesn't clearly address garage lighting. And the, the lights shining from a garage at night can really be a problem. And I think all it talks about is parking lot lights. And I want to make it, I want that paragraph to be reworded, to make it clear that we also require that, to petition it to reduce its parking garage lights during the night and early morning because of safety and security concerns. And then, so that's the sentence about parking lot lights, but it should also apply to parking garage lights. Then the next sentence is no later than 11:30 PM, the petitioner shall reduce the parking lot lights using the lights on the building to shine down and provide basic security. Well, that sentence really only applies to parking lots because the building, the lots shining, the lights shining down from the building aren't going to affect the, the security and the need for some lighting within the garage. So, but I just want to make sure. And then there's a third sentence, the, the building lights shall be set at a low light level to prevent any annoyance to the neighbors to the extent reasonable and practical. And even in that sentence, I think the implication for building perhaps is the office building, lab building. So in that sentence, we say the building and garage light, light should be set at its low level.
So Lee, do you hear Jean's suggestions there to, in the first and the last sentence, specifically call out the light for the garage structure?
Yes, I understand what her concern is and I can look at, I think, maybe what we did over at TripAdvisor and see how we managed this too, Jean, but certainly yes, I understand what you, what, what goal you want to accomplish.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other comments? So again, if there are non-substantive things, to please let Lee know so she can incorporate into our next draft, which we intend to vote at our next meeting on December 19, I think. Now is the time for any other substantive comments?
Is this substantive? There, there's mention about solar, but, and there was, there's mention about changing from silver to gold. But by definition, does that mean there is solar on this building? I mean, they're talking about, they've, they're, they've been looking at it. But does that mean it's going to be a, you know, part of our requirement to actually have the solar?
I don't, I don't know that it's going to be a specific requirement, but they are required to meet the specifics to ensure a green, a lean, a lean gold standard.
You know.
That doesn't require solar necessarily.
So if we're able to achieve it in other ways.
We could always say that it, we want it to be solar ready or something, they'll put the solar now.
We can also say that it has to have solar.
Do you know a company that could install it?
We wouldn't, I wouldn't be doing it. My, I would not be doing it. I think it's, I mean, I think it should have, they've, they've talked about solar in the garage, solar on the top of the two, top of the two buildings. I think it should be a, I think we should say that it has to have, it's supposed to have solar. Any reason why, any reason why we shouldn't?
I mean, I, I don't know exactly what the roof structure is going to be in terms of other mechanicals and the layout of other things.
No, I understand, I understand that.
As in part because of, if there are labs here, it may break up the massing of the roof. They may not make solar panels in this particular instance.
Well, the garage is a given, that can easily take, which will obviously raise the height, but solar is, solar is not, not part of the height restriction. But the garage is not a, is not related to that. The so, the garage will always be, have the ability to have solar on it.
But cars are intended, vehicles will be parked on that level.
Correct, correct. Well, that's, that's what's going on. But that's what, that's what, that's what, oh yeah, that's what PTC is doing. They're putting that, that big massive solar canopy on it after the fact. To do it before the fact is that much easier. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we make it part of the requirement?
Because I think that, I think there, you know, they initially started at one standard. We've substantially raised that standard to go, as you know, from, from silver to gold requires, you know, you know, a number of other substantive modifications. And again, if, you know, if the, the north building and the south building has different kinds of tenants and, you know, including labs, and we don't know exactly where each of the exhaust port would be depending on, may not make sense. So I think, but I do think that they are committed to an energy efficient building.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that they don't put the required mechanicals up there and, because the solar has to go there, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, you know, for example, the parking garage could easily have solar. That's, that's not even a question mark. It could easily have solar and should have solar, not even a question mark. And, and, and the, and the statement that the building should have solar as, as possible given the mechanical, any mechanical layouts, something to that effect. But the garage is a given.
Well, it's a, it's a given to you.
It's a given, it's, it's a given as far as a possibility.
Well, I think, I think it's, you know, it's also possible, you know, there are all kinds of things that are possible. Yet we, yet, and I would like to see as we evolve and reform our zoning bylaws, that as we're dealing with, you know, as we're dealing with achieving, you know, incentives for a greater FAR, that those are the kinds of initiatives that we would include as, as part of that.
Except for, except for sitting here right now with the ability to do something. We have the ability to do something. And I understand, I understand the main two roof surfaces. I understand that there could be some mechanical requirements which could make that more difficult. That's fine, I'm not, I'm not saying no mechanicals, I'm not saying it has to be solar, I'm saying here.
You are, you're now saying.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying the solar as, as, as possible on the two buildings, but the solar has to be on the garage. The garage, the garage, it can't.
Would you like to suggest, are you making a, a motion to?
I'm making, I'm making a motion that the solar, that the garage has, has to have solar on the, on the top level, has to be covered in solar. And the two roof surfaces as possible, as, as allowed, as the mechanicals allow, should have solar as well.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm not seconding it because I actually like the idea of if later they want to put solar on, they come back and just as we did at PTC, there is a hearing. Because it would change the look of the building and might be something that the people in the area want to comment on.
And it's also creates some other additional. And it's also creates some other additional, um, uh, you know, how, like, PTC had a very deliberate plan in how they were dealing with water, stormwater management as a result of that, and placement of, of the mechanicals, so I would...
Well, I mean, I can appreciate people, you know, having people to be able to comment on it, that's a very legitimate, that's a very legitimate thing. The stormwater aspect is, is not, is, is, is not, is not legitimate concern, because they're dealing, they're already dealing with the stormwater, where is the stormwater going on the garage?
What we saw with PTC, the stormwater management on the...
Big, big no, you, you, big, big difference, big no, huge difference. Existing garage, solar on top, big difference. Brand-new garage with solar, stormwater is just an integral part of what's being dealt with. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't make it more difficult. But I can appreciate Jean's comment about how people being able to comment on it after the fact. So I will, I will withdraw it, simply because I'm a believer that people should be able to comment on it.
So I think it does...
It should've been brought up much earlier.
So that's right, so I was just about to say that, that, you know, we've closed, we've closed the hearing, and otherwise it would require, so, so I think that is a good way to handle it, that, you know, we're, we're noting in the minutes of this meeting that we would encourage them to adopt a solar canopy in the parking garage, and, and where and as is practical, on the north and the south building, and that they subsequently come ba, you know, come back to us when they devise that plan, and then it'll be another hearing for us.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate, that was a, that was a good point, Jean, that people should be able to visually see and comment on it. So, yeah, for that reason.
I don't believe that resolution.
Yeah.
I do have a comment, though, I think it would be wise if the building were solar-ready, which means you just bring electric up to the top so that it's ready to have solar.
And struck, and struck, and structurally wise, it has to be structurally made to accommodate that in the future.
Yeah, should, so, we should make sure Lee heard that, that as, as a condition, it's solar-ready?
Structurally, structurally, structurally...
Solar-ready, so that, that if they don't do it now, they can do it later, and it's already ready to go.
Yeah.
Although that's not what happened initially at PTC, they created that, right? And that was part of their plan, that's why they needed the additional mechanicals to change the electrical engineering.
Right, so if this is ready for it to be that way, then it's designed so that you don't have to retrofit later.
And the reason PTC had those cutouts in the garage, in the roof, is because physically wise, structurally wise, it couldn't take, the, the garage could not sustain the structure in those, that's why, that's why they said they cut them up, because the structure wasn't, wasn't adequate to sustain, designed to hold it. So this, this needs to be designed to accommodate solar in the future. I, and I'm happy with that.
I don't think it's unusual for us to have a permit that says that, or to have applicants that say they will do that, um, of solar-ready.
Have we required, Lee, have we, have we in the past, having closed the hearing, uh, made a, a change that required an applicant's property, new construction, to be solar-ready?
No.
Well, they've, they've already stated that they were going to, you know, look to the future, have it solar, so they've already, they've already laid the foundation for us to say, okay, you've already, you're already looking for it to be solar-ready, so we're gonna make sure, okay, we'll make sure it is solar-ready then. They've already stated their intent. So we're gonna make sure that the building is structurally there, ready for it to be solar. What's wrong with that?
I think, I think Artie, I think Artie's right on that. I mean, they have, they indicated their intent to do it, and to make sure that the building could accommodate it, and so I think, in that case, all they're doing is really putting a condition in that is reflective of their statement and of intent.
And it's one of, probably one of the recommendations of the Climate Action Plan Group when that goes through, it's been a lot of discussions, I mean, eventually, everything will have to be net zero, so it's wise to, to make it solar-ready.
Uh, Paul, do you have any comment on this item?
Oh, I, I agree with Artie, that if, if that's what they represented to us in the past, um, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem for us to put that condition in, that the building be built to be solar-ready for panels in the future.
Okay, so you'll, uh, Lee, I guess, um, be able to update the decision to reflect that?
Yes.
Okay, I don't recall seeing that as a finding, but, um, uh...
It was, it's in the, it's in the PDF file somewhere that they're, that they've made the sta, they made the statement of...
In the finding and the decision?
Well, but the finding and the decision, I don't know if it's in there at all.
The other representations are...
Yeah, it was represented, it was represented to us that way, so...
Yeah, I think it makes sense that it's a finding.
Right, if they've represented that, so, okay. Uh, Artie, do you have any other comments on the decision?
No, I, I, I think that pretty much, no, I don't think I'm good.
I have a quick question, if we can get back to the garage?
Yes, please, Paul.
Um, we're talking about, they're, they're coming back to us with, I don't know if it's a plan or a drawing, of change to the garage from Gould Street. Is it possible that we can have that before the nineteen?
No, I think, I think the, I think the plan, I think the intention is to set this out, Lee's gonna put it in as a condition, and then like I was saying before, that, you know, we'll vote the decision, if it's, you know, if it's passed sometime in the future, when they're finalizing their plans, as they have to go back to the building to get a building permit, uh, as they have to come back, you know, to, you know, to other boards, they'll come back to the design review board, and they'll come back to us at that time, which, I don't know if that's gonna be in ten months from now, or when it would be, but it would be at a point in the future, before they get their building permit, that the design review board and then the planning board would, you know, would have to have a meeting and discuss that, and approve it or not approve it. It's not something that we're gonna get before, uh, you know, two weeks from now.
I think we're just gonna have the same argument two weeks from now that we had tonight, then.
No, because I think, I think we're resolved now on, on the point, that it will, that, uh, that they will come in at a subsequent time when they have that plan, and they finalized, you know, the, the architecture and the, uh, and the engineering, and they go to Dave Roat for a building permit, in order to get that building permit, they have to in advance come to us for that approval. The same way, as this in the decision, there are other, there are other things in order to get, uh, uh, Dave's consent for the building, uh, for, I shouldn't say Dave, but in order to get the, the building permits, they have to get other approvals.
I appreciate that. I just, I'm thinking that in two weeks, Artie is looking to have the parking garage reduced by one story, which, which he's saying is ten feet. What's proposed is seven feet. We're talking, we may just be talking semantics, but what we're talking about is a difference of three feet. And I'm thinking that if we had a drawing that showed a seven-foot difference from what we have now, that would satisfy Artie, that the, that the parking garage looks pretty good from Gould Street with the reduction of seven feet, then we're there.
Well, I think if we, I, I think that, I mean, the vote may...
I don't think, I don't think Artie's gonna be satisfied at seven feet, unless he sees something that makes it look, that makes it look, look good to him.
I understand that.
He's stuck on one story, whatever that means.
I, I understand that, and we may, and the vote will, you know, be made, I guess, accordingly, it's just that if they, if they provide a whole new plan set, then we probably have to reopen the hearing and go back to that process.
They're not applying, they're just presenting us with a drawing of what the garage will look like with seven feet reduced from the top.
And Lee, that won't require a hearing?
I guess I'm a little worried about, you know, whether or not that opens up a requirement for a hearing, Paul, I mean, it's my only reluctance.
So instead, we have a condition that requires them to reduce the, the height of the garage between seven and ten feet.
Yeah, I don't think, they, they're not, you know, I, Tim, do you wanna speak to that, you're, you're present?
Please, uh, Tim is gonna, uh, come to the microphone in a second.
Hi, Paul.
Hey, hi, Tim, good to see you.
Good to see you, sorry you're feeling under the weather. So, yeah, so my email, Paul, suggests that, um, we'll submit a revised plan to address the screening and the visual, uh, uh, impact from Gould Street. And I do agree with Lee, I don't think we can submit a new plan, but I think we can agree to a condition that requires us to make those modifications, to screen it and to reduce it, and to bring it back to the design review board and, um, the planning board for approval, uh, consistent with those.
In order to obtain specifically a building permit?
Yeah, prior to the issuance of a building permit, yeah.
Oh, we would have to let us a plan modification, because all the plan modifications have to happen before a building permit.
Right.
Right, yeah, this would be one of those things, yes.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you all.
Artie, is that...
I'm okay now.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Artie, is that understandable?
It'll, it'll come back, and, um, if they're coming, if, if, if in theory they're coming back with reducing it by one story, and they're starting at the same elevation, then perhaps everyone will be happy.
Okay.
We'll find out.
Does anyone else have any other comments on, on this?
No, I mean, I understand our expectation is that we'll have the final decision ready for, um, a vote, uh, at our next meeting on the nineteen?
Yes, December nineteenth, that's what we'll intend to...
Yes, and so, and so just so you know, I have distributed the plan, um, to DPW, to, I mean, the draft decision to DPW to look at, and, um, the building inspector to look at, and, um, I will be, I'm also gonna have town council take a look at this draft decision, and so any, any feedback I get from them, I'll, I'll incorporate into a red line that you'll have, as well as what you discussed tonight. And, um, I think also, from my vantage point, I think there is really one issue that you should be aware of, and that's how we're gonna manage, the retail uses being permitted by special permit, and the, um, restaurant uses being permitted by special permit. Generally, when we have a restaurant in particular, we have a specific end user, um, and we're issuing the permit to a vendor with hours of operation, um, so I think we need to think through how we're gonna manage it in this case. This is the first time we've had a special permit request for a restaurant without the end user, um, on the table. So, I mean, there's, there's a couple different approaches, um, we could require, we could recognize those uses and require those vendors, when, um, they're selected to come in front of the board for approval, or we could write, uh, conditions that would apply, for example, to the restaurant, similar to conditions we have for other restaurants, and then whatever restaurant comes in, has to live in, in that umbrella of conditions that we've created or modified the permit. So I think those are two approaches, but that's not currently addressed in this draft.
So, there's nothing in the decision now addressing that issue, Lee?
Addressing that issue, I mean, the relief that they're looking for is there, but how we're gonna manage that, um, is not embedded in, in this draft. It wasn't clear to me the best way to approach it, um, whether to create, you know, just con, just general conditions for a restaurant, similar to what we create for other restaurants, even though we don't know what, what restaurant it is, or to acknowledge the fact that we're kind of, that those uses are fine, that the, that the final, um, vendor that's gonna occupy those spaces needs to come back for your approval.
And, Mr. Chair, may I further address this? I'm glad this issue was raised, because it wasn't, it was one that people who commented at the, at the hearings were concerned about, and, um, I, I think at a prior session, uh, perhaps while the hearings were still going on, we as a board discussed this, on whether, gee, do we want to prohibit alcohol, and we thought, oh no, no, we don't wanna prohibit alcohol, um, but there may be hours of operation, so it doesn't, the restaurant doesn't go too late into the evening, uh, maybe we wanna say only beer and wine, um, that may be something, on the second option Lee presented, that is, we set out what the standards are right here in this decision. Hours of operation, maybe we say you have to end at ten P.M. or something, because the idea was family-friendly restaurants that are also, um, serving the needs of the occupants of the, you know, the, of the lab and office. I think we could draft, uh, provisions like that, that are very clear, and then, if a restaurant comes along and says, well, gee, our operation's different from yours, and I'd do something real different than that, they would have to come in for a modification.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine.
Can I comment on that?
I'm fine. Yes, please, go ahead.
I like Lee's last option.
Yes.
We just basically generally say that, um, that's a use that, um, is permitted by special permit, and when the applicant comes before us, uh, it will, the board will consider it, because we could set out conditions now, but we haven't had a public hearing on what those conditions might be. We can set out conditions now that some of the neighborhood people aren't gonna like. They haven't had an opportunity to come before us and discuss those conditions. So, I mean, if we say, um, restaurant has to close by ten o'clock, and the neighborhood says, well, no, we, we want the restaurant to close by nine o'clock, now you're already permitting ten o'clock. Um, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure we should be doing that.
Uh, Jean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I wanna respectfully disagree with, uh, our members' categorization that this has not been discussed in the hearing. It was, it was discussed quite a bit at the hearing, as I recall.
We did talk more specifically, for instance, about the pub, and, and, uh, there were, although there was at least one, uh, person who said that they did not, that they wanted a pub in that area, there were many people in the hearing that had said they did not want a pub in the area, or on this site, and the applicant at the time then said they weren't, they wouldn't entertain it, which is why when we were dealing with the zoning, we removed it from Highway Commercial One. So I do, you're right, we did talk about it, we didn't talk about establishing specific conditions about, uh, you know, um, uh, hours of operation, and, uh, you know, um, and, and we, I don't think we talked about it in terms of specific kinds of alcohol use, but...
Well, we did, we did talk about some closing time around eight P.M. I'm not saying that should be the closing time.
You're right.
But we did talk about eight P.M.
I don't remember that, I don't remember that part.
I'm pretty sure eight P.M. was mentioned.
Yeah, we did talk about eight P.M. I just don't know, you know, is, is that the right, is, you know, I'm not saying that should be in there, but we did talk about that.
So, Paul, were you saying that generally you do not like the idea of having, establishing base conditions now?
Correct. I'm much more comfortable having an actual applicant in front of us who says, this is what we want to do, and the public has an opportunity to comment on that before we set out any conditions as, as to what a restaurant should, should be.
So here, we would approve the special permit for the use only, but not for the operations?
Correct.
And Natasha, do you have a particular feeling, one way or the other?
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't, Paul, I don't know how you, you couldn't, you, I don't, you couldn't approve a restaurant use, I think you'd have to...
Whatever you said at the end, Lee, you gave us an option, the last option that you gave us.
Well, I think it's to basically indicate that you would be amenable, that you want the space at that corner of the building, you know, preserved for a retail or a restaurant use, and when the specific end user is identified, then they come in and apply for any special permits that are required.
That's exactly what I wanna see.
So no special permit is issued at this time?
For that use.
Wait, what's...
Well, no, we are, we are, we are saying that, that space, um, there's a certain space that they have set aside and said it will be retail or restaurant, and we're going along with that. We're saying that these spaces can be, can be used for retail or restaurant, and come back to us when you have, when you have an end user. They can't, they can't go in with a fitness center. They can go in with retail or restaurant. That's what our conditions is.
If, I'd be okay with that, we're basically not granting the special permit at the present time, and we're just saying that the applicant has to set aside that space for that use in the future.
Right, so...
Can't be used for office or lab.
Right, but wouldn't that be a special permit for that, and then you would have additional information?
additional information, once there's an identified tenant?
Well, I, I was stating what I thought Lee was saying. I'm not, so maybe it needs to be restated.
Lee, is it a special permit right now, and then when there's...
It's a special permit for a restaurant use, and it's a special permit for a retail space over a certain size.
5,750 square feet.
We're making a condition to this special permit, that that particular area, that particular space, will be either retail or restaurant use.
I don't know.
That's the condition to this special permit, that's, that's what I'm here.
But, and then if they, and then if they determine that they're not able to lease it up for retail, and they want to...
They have to come back to us to amend this special permit.
For additional lab or office use.
Right, they would have to come back to us to amend it.
Artie, do you have a comment?
No, I mean, I'm okay with what Paul's saying. I think it's a little up in the air, and instead of, you know, shoeholing it, or shoeholing, you know, exactly in something, let's keep it a little bit more broad, and when they come back, then we'll decide what's right.
And Natasha, do you have any comments?
No, no comments, done what I already said.
And if Lee thinks this will work, I'm, I'm good with it, too.
Aye, aye.
I just want to comment that part of this whole project that has made it amenable to us, and I hope to the neighborhood, is that there will be restaurant and/or retail space there, that it's not going to be just office and just labs. And they have represented that they want this particular space, this particular square footage, it's got to be on the first floor, to be retail and/or restaurant. And so, we're saying, fine, we'll put a condition that that space that you're designating will be retail and, and/or restaurant. I don't think we have to go any, any further than that.
So just so I'm clear, then we would grant a special permit for the, for a restaurant, and grant...
No, it's part of this general special permit. It is a one-paragraph condition in the general permit decision that we're going to review on December 19th. It's just one paragraph, it's three lines.
Okay, but I just want to be clear.
It's not a special permit by itself.
No, I think it is clear, what Paul is saying is, no special permit for a restaurant will be voted on at this time. It's just that the decision wording will say that this space has to be set aside for a restaurant or...
Retail.
Retail use.
So, I, I understand the decision, I'm just thinking through, when we come to the vote for the relief, we're just not going to vote in favor of the relief for a special permit for, A, a restaurant, and as a separate relief, a, a single retail tenant between 5750 and 10,000 square feet. Is that right, Paul?
That sounds right to me, yes.
Tim?
Could I just cut my act there?
Yeah.
So...
Just, come to the microphone, please.
Yep. So, so just for clarification, so we've asked for, we've proposed that area to be retail and restaurant. As part of that proposal, we've asked for a special permit, because you need a special permit for restaurant, and you need a special permit for retail of a certain size. We don't know which it's going to be, so we asked for that relief. My suggestion, just a suggestion to the board, would be to grant the relief, and then with respect to the restaurant, require some subsequent submittal before they can occupy, related to whatever conditions the board's concerned about, because to require it but not allow it seems a bit odd. We've asked to allow it, so we're just asking for it to be allowed in that space, and then you could condition that we submit something to you prior to opening, in this case, I think restaurants are what people are focused on.
I understand that. Paul?
Yes, and it sounds like what Tim is asking for is that we're approving the retail use, so that when they get a retail tenant, they don't have to come back to us.
That's right.
It's as if it's right at that point.
Yeah, that, that's right. And, and with respect to restaurant, Paul, we'd be asking for the approval of the restaurant, subject to submitting whatever additional information the board needs to evaluate before it opens up, hours of operation, or whatever those things are typically.
Sounds like reasonable language to me.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
The only concern I have is the future exercise of discretion. You know, as compared with the, the look of the garage, we're setting standards in our decision on exactly what that plan is supposed to show us. So, we don't have the issue of putting off till a future time, a discretionary decision. Whereas, if we say, yes, you've got a special permit for a restaurant, but they have to come back to us to make a discretionary decision about whether we allow this restaurant at these operating hours, and this kind of food and service, it, it sounds very discretionary to me, as if it's, it requires a special permit process. And that's my only concern, it's kind of a legalistic concern.
That we're creating two special permit processes?
Yeah.
Well, I think, go ahead, Tim.
I, I think that's a, I understand your concern, Gene, I think it would be more specific that, you know, we'd have to submit for the restaurant prior to opening, hours of operation, you know, refuse management, whatever the things that you would typically condition a restaurant on, we would have to submit to you prior to occupancy.
That would come to us, and the, and in a public hearing, so we would hold a hearing in that sense for, you know, residents and other businesses, whomever, to comment on that specific operator, and then the board would subsequently, you know, either approve, either with conditions, or not approve, that particular restaurant.
Could we simply, between now and the time we, we take a vote on the decision, get our, our town legal counsel to say whether the proposed idea that, well, we'll grant the special permit, but there will be a hearing later to set the conditions, is, is lawful?
Okay.
And if, if our town counsel says it's okay, I'm good with it.
Okay, so Lee, are you clear?
Lee, Gene, I think that, I think that procedurally, what, what we're talking about, when they come back to us with a specific restaurant tenant, would be an amendment to the special permit, which is functionally the same thing as a special permit process.
Right.
But so, you know, I don't, I don't see where that's a problem.
It would be an amendment to the special permit?
I think there is a functional difference between approving the building plans, which deals with FAR, which deals with height, which deals with all of those issues, and a use permit, where we don't know what the use is.
So we'd grant a special permit for restaurant use for this portion of the property, but we'd say, but no, no restaurant may occupy this without an amendment to this special permit?
Setting forth the particulars, setting forth the particulars of the, of the restaurant, restaurant operation.
Is the main thing we're talking about is the operating, operating hours? Is that the main thing that we're really...
Oh, no, there are a lot of issues, Mark, Artie.
Yeah, there can be, there can be multiple, different kinds, different restaurant concepts and different impacts.
Yeah, and I can pretty different, but...
We could be talking about the number of tables, we could be talking about whether there's takeout, how many, how many takeout stations there would be.
Which affects parking.
You know, and the number of tables depends upon how many square feet there are, all kinds of issues. Not just hours of operation.
So I think that we're resolved, that we'll allow, when it comes to the vote on the relief, we'll grant the relief for the single retail tenant, and for the major, and for the restaurant use, and, and then we'll have a condition that also says more specifically that the specific restaurateur and/or retailers will need to come back for an amendment to the special permit. Okay, I'm clear. So this, I think we're resolved with this? Okay, so now we, thank you all very much. This brings us to the third item on our agenda, which is the request to abandon special permit rights with respect to major project site plan special permit number 2005-07, Carbon Health, with respect to the property located at 100 and 120 Highland Avenue. We received, thank you all very much, we received a request dated October 26 by the petitioners, in respect of the amendment, to abandon their rights as a result, or stated in the amendment dated April 25, 2022. Lee, do we need a motion on this?
Uh, yes.
All right, Alex also said yes at the table. So, I, I, so can I have a motion to consent to abandoning the special permit rights conveyed under the amendment, to the petitioners, under the amendment dated April 25, 2022?
Well, before we get there, I have a question on it.
Yes, please.
Would it, would it make more sense to move to revoke the amendment to the special permit?
Lee?
Uh, this was actually the process that Chris Heap had recommend, had recommended, and had...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to disagree with Chris Heap.
Okay, this is the process that he and Rick Mann worked out.
Okay, good enough. Gee, you were about to make a motion.
Yeah, so Gene, so Gene made a motion, Lee, Artie, did you second the motion?
I'll second it.
Artie seconded the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker? Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Aye. We have agreed to, with the petitioner, to abandon the rights under the special permit amendment.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Do we know if this is being abandoned, is the property owner is looking to basically do something different with the two buildings? I mean, do we have any idea why?
Lee?
Well, this use is not going forward, and so, and I think the property owner wants to implement another use at the property.
So it's between the landlord and tenant, and they couldn't finalize. So having said that, although that may not necess, what I just characterized might actually not be true, it could be that the, that Carbon Health is the tenant, decided on their own, that they chose...
Yeah, no, I was just curious if anyone, anyone knew at all.
I have no anecdotal information.
And that, and that actually placed, you know, conditions on the parking and the management of the lot, which will now go away, now that they're not going forward.
Right. So this takes us to the fourth item on our agenda, which is a transfer of the special permit from TDRG Inc., which is Doing Businesses Cook Needham Restaurant, yes?
And, Mr. Chairman, they're not present tonight, and I think it's important that they, that they be present for this transfer, so I want to suggest that we take this up at the meeting on the 19th.
Okay, I, just so I'm clear, the current owner of the restaurant is Paul Torano, right? He's, he's the president of TDRG, Doing Businesses Cook Needham?
Yes.
And then it's a transfer to Seed Corp, C with, Seed with a C, also Doing Businesses as Cook Restaurant, but it looks like with a different, a different owner. Is that right? With Diana Sepulveda and Edison Gutierrez.
Yes, so it's a transfer of ownership, and so normally, we write a transfer decision, then they're present to, to talk to you about how they're going to run the business, and we have them sign something that indicates that they intend to live by the conditions of the base permit.
Right. I did see that they, that they acknowledged, having read and agreed to abide by that, but I wasn't clear on whether they were going to maintain it as Cook or something else, but, which was a question that I had for you, but we can address that another time.
I thought I read, didn't we get something, or read, that they were going to make some modifications to the inside?
Without renovations, it was a weird...
Yeah, without renovation, they were doing something, but without...
Yeah, which is why they were going to be present to talk about that in the ownership structure, I'm sure. So, all right, so do you have an idea when they're going to return to us?
I'd like to put it on for the next meeting, the 19th.
Okay, I'll, Gene and I will, and you will probably have a conversation about that agenda, but hopefully there's a...
It's going to be a long one.
Well, I, so then that brings us to the fifth item on our agenda this evening, which is the request to release the off-street drainage bond for Hunter Ridge Road, the subdivision located at one, at 1135 Webster Street. And the drainage, the off-street drainage bond amount is 24,500. We've received an email in May from Petrini Corp, to, which was the developer, to request the release. We have a memo from the, from the planning board, from the planning department to the health department, advising of the request to release the bond, and then a memo from the health department dated November 28, stating that the Board of Health approved the releasing of the bond for all seven lots. So, Lee, do we just take a motion now to release the bond of 24,500 to Petrini Corp?
Yes.
May I have such a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from, from Artie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Natasha, to release the bond of 24,500 to Petrini Corp. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have agreed to the release. This brings us to the, the next item on our agenda, which is our committee appointment to the Design Review Board. And Natasha, myself, with Lee, and Mark losing, who's chair of the Design Review Board, had interviews last week with three candidates, each of whom were quite different, with very different backgrounds, and we, and we were, we were just about set to make a recommendation to the board tonight on one particular candidate who is subsequently withdrawn. And, Mark, are you aware of that? Do you know that?
No, and I actually didn't participate in the interviews. I set them up for you, but I didn't participate. No, I did not know she withdrew.
So she...
We had three really great candidates, and two that stood out to be...
Yes, absolute for this.
And out of those two, one, one just basically said that they weren't interested, so, so we have a really good candidate still.
So the, so the second candidate, who is also a very good candidate, his name is Steve Dornbusch, and I believe, Lee, you included, or Alex, you included their resumes in our packets.
No, I just forwarded them to you.
To the board. So, thank you very much.
Very good resumes.
So Steve has an interesting background, he is, he was formerly an art director or creative director with many, many years, with the National Fire Protection Association. He was an interesting fellow. One of the funny things is that the, the person, the vacancy that's created on the board, which gives rise to this tonight, is they had a, they had a person who had a particular...
Skill set.
Skill set in signage.
Signage, yep.
And this person...
And so does this person, right.
So, it kind of works itself out. So, I, can I have a, first of all, does anyone have any comments? Natasha, would you like to make a motion to appoint?
Sure.
Steve Dornbusch to the Design Review Board?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Gene beat you to that one, Artie.
That's good, that's good.
And any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have appointed Steve Dornbusch to the Design Review Board. Lee, are you able, or Alex, to be in touch with him?
Yes, we'll, we'll be in touch with him, and we'll formalize the appointment process.
And then also with Mark, too, please.
Sure.
And, and one of the things that I would like to say, if that's okay, is that when we do these interviews, there are a new pool of, of people that are, that are sending their resumes in, that should be taken into account for other opportunities with town committees, because they, it diversifies our pool of people that are contributing to, you know, they're volunteering for the town, and we have a lot of talent that maybe has not come up front as the typical, you know, the typical group, and so I just want to reiterate that, that... Reiterate that, that anytime, and we saw that with the housing plan working group as well. We have a lot of people that want to be involved in the town and they, we should share that information with the other departments who are looking for volunteers.
And so specifically to extend Natasha's point. The third candidate that applied was Ross Donald. Who has a strong background in environmentalism. Uh, and maybe, uh, you know, a good candidate for consideration for the Conservation Commission. So, um, you know, just to be aware of that and maybe pass the resume along if there's an opening, um.
Yeah, actually, do we know, because I know they filled the, one of the openings, but there were two, do we have any idea if they filled that last opening?
I don't believe that they have.
Oh, boy.
So, uh-
It might be worth, you know, sending over the resume, well, contacting him and asking him first, but.
Right.
It just, it just feels like we should be looking out for other opportunities for people that may not be the first candidate for these positions. Um, as a way of, of diversifying our pool of volunteers.
Conservation Commission is seven, I think it's seven people on the concom. That really needs, that's really needs someone else on there, they need that seventh person.
So this kind of brings us now to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion of the. Uh, uh, the Housing Plan Working Group. Housing Plan, the draft, uh, plan. Um, as chair. It's, uh, it's my, it's the privilege to be able to make the first set of comments, which. Uh, which I'd like to say that I think that. Uh, that you and Jean, you've done an excellent job over the last year. To corral a very strong board, uh, sub, you know, working, working group. Across many areas of the town, we've had multiple people from the public to participate in this. You under, uh, uh, you pursued a, a survey, which is not easy to be able to administer. Um, I, I think, you know, having gone through it, I think that, um. Uh, I think you, the committee has, the three subcommittees, has identified. You know, a, uh, a long list of short-term, medium-term and long-term initiatives. That, um, that are, that are all important to the overall effort. Um, and I commend you both for a job well done, I think that where the town is better off for having this. Report and then it's gonna come to the hard part of not to diminish. The wa, the weight and the workload that you had carried for over, for a year or more at this time. Yet, how do we implement this thing, they, I, I, I did think that, um. Uh, and I look forward to being able to do that, to go through this report. With you and with your recommendations and I would like to set up. Um, uh, I would like to, to set up a, a, a plan so that we can identify a number of these initiatives. And schedule them, working with Lee and Alex. On a specific plan for, cause when I was reading through these, uh, proposals. For the May twenty twenty-three me, uh, town meeting, October twenty twenty-three town meeting. And the same with twenty twenty-four, the two meetings, so I'd like to, I'd like to do that, I was. I was hoping to see a, a little more or more on the, on the impacts. I'm surprised that we didn't really have, um. Uh, a discussion on the impacts for the school system, uh. Uh, other parts of the infrastructure, health department, fire and police, E M T calls. Parks and Recreation, the roadway network, uh, sewer and water, in addition to a fiscal impact. An analysis or a discussion, but I think what, when I took a step back. I don't think that that's really what the goal of this was, it was. You know, the, and to identify, cause you do, you do say that further analysis and further study is needed. And fortunately, you've gone through a step further and identified what, what's required for each of those initiatives, so I thought that was. Brilliantly laid out.
Can I just answer to that one, so I was with the capacity group and one of the things, we, I had Michael O'Brien and I had Fincom also. Um, Carol Ficetti and one of the things that we discussed about is the school is doing a master plan, so until that master plan comes out. We can't really see the impact because they're in the middle of doing it.
Right.
Regarding, um, uh, some of these other things, what, what we determined is that A D Us. And generally don't really cause a lot of change in capacity because it's one unit, usually for, you know, a small. Uh, for one person usually, or for a small group. And then the other developments, what Carol was saying was that the other developments, the capacity that's used is based on the specific development. So i- it's harder to assess. Specifically the fiscal impact of it or the impact in the schools, it depends on the development, if you have units that are one bedroom. The, the larger units impact schools because it's families typically. The smaller units could be elderly, or it could be people without children, or it could be a, a starting family, so. I think it's all project-based and, and this master plan was gonna give kind of an umbrella and not specific. And I think that, that the action items are more specific, I don't know, um, if you agree.
I'm glad you mentioned that the school department is doing a master plan. Um, because there's not much, we, we really would, would await that plan to talk about, um, possible impacts on schools. Um, and I think also what you said about, um, the, project-specific impacts. Uh, would naturally be addressed and even, even sooner than project impacts. Res, at the time of rezoning, um, the, the possible impacts would need to be addressed. But with, at the plan itself, um, it's, it's kind of a funny level to be addressing impacts.
So do you, do you have a sense of how many units of housing? We, a range of units of how many we anticipate creating here, like if we did these. Things, we would anticipate a thousand units, if we did these things, fifteen hundred units. And if we did these things, two thousand units and over five years, ten years, twenty years?
Yes, I hope I'm not making a mistake in the figures. Uh, but we're supposed to zone for the equivalent of fifteen percent. Of the housing units that this town already has.
Um, which is, I think, about seventeen hundred or so, eighty?
Yeah, seventeen hundred and eighty is, is a good, is a good, so if you. Take fifteen percent of that amount, that's what we're supposed to be-
Seventeen eighty?
Fifteen percent of seventeen eighty?
Seventeen eighty.
Or is, or is the fifteen percent of seventeen eighty?
Two hundred and sixty-seven.
It's, city?
Fifteen, uh-
That seems light, I think, I think the seventeen something, the roughly seventeen or eighteen hundred units. Is the fifteen percent that you're talking about?
You're probably right, so it's something like-
Sixty-seven, sounds like a lot.
Like ten thousand housing units.
No, it's not, but that's a thing.
But I thought-
That's, that's-
All right, but it's, it's something in like more than a thousand units.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but, but what you're doing is you're taking already developed areas. And zoning them so that you can do multi-family, uh, development by right. How many developers will actually come along and do that? It's a big unknown, um, so, um.
I'm just saying like what, how we handled. You know, Muzzy, uh, when we were rezoning that and we, and, and. Everything was unknown, we didn't know what kind of a development would come through.
And we got zero there.
With, no, with Muzzy, we got, we got a, a sizable development.
But we got zero housing.
Oh, no, 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 I understand that, but the, hold on, but the re, the reason I bring that up is because. The, the whole point of your engagement was to, you know, was to identify what the maximum build-out would be, so if the maximum build-out, for instance. Was let's say two thousand units. What is, you know, what would the anticipated, um.
Capacity.
What, yeah, what, uh, participated, well, we could ta, we could, you know, we, there are models that we can say if we add two thousand units. We would anticipate fifty percent or sixty percent would be school-based. Do you know what I mean, and then from that flow into the school impact? And if we know that there's two thousand, we can use that to understand what the impact would be.
Yeah, no, I think you make a good point, I, I think that the, one thing that I want Lee to comment on this is that. We changed zoning in some areas and we have had no housing developed, so, um.
Yeah, that's, I think sometimes when you change zoning, I like, for example, when we did the zoning for Needham Center. Uh, we were trying to project what was gonna be the build-out, how fast was that build-out gonna occur? What would its impact be on, on, on traffic? Um, and so we didn't take the full build-out, we were trying to make assumptions on the market in terms of how, how quickly it would evolve, so just. Your, your fixed build-out doesn't necessarily give you the, the total, it has to be adjusted for market realities, it also has to be adjusted for. Ownership patterns, so the changes that Jean's talking about making to zoning to enable higher density housing to be built. Are all, are all good changes to make, but how quickly they are implemented is, is really, you know, a function of market demand. That is also a function of ownership and fragmented ownership and so it's not necessarily gonna give you. The number that the zoning is telling you is your full build-out if all those barriers disappear.
Right, I'm just saying that we can make, you know, we can, we can make reasonable, um.
Assumptions?
Yeah, and, and determine from there. And the market reality will be different and it's true that, you know, between the overlay A and overlay B. We only ended up with one development. Uh, and, you know, I, I would like to see some additional zoning change there. That need, so talking about the, you know, Needham Center is a funny thing. Is that an area where we, you know, where we would like to increase multifamily housing? Personally, I do.
Yes, and we have, um, we have, we've set aside the center however. And said, we're, because the M B T A Communities Act, to comply with it. You, you can't allow only mixed-use housing. It has to be standalone multifamily, you can also allow mixed-use housing in the same zone, but as long as you allow. Standalone multifamily and we determined that we don't want to change the zoning for our center.
You wanna preserve mixed use?
We wanna preserve mixed use, um, so we are talking about standalone multifamily for Chestnut Street. And then going, uh, on the, for the, for the business strip that goes from, you know, from the nursing home. I mean, not the nursing, the funeral homes, all the way up to Sudbury Farms, yes, allow multifamily housing there. And then a couple of other zones going farther, uh, along Highland Avenue. Um, but, um, but not right in the downtown.
Because we want mixed use, right, but I think one of the biggest things, so, one of the things is identifying. You know, I mean, Oscar and Jean have been working on the zoning map, which I think is really excellent.
Yeah.
And that's one, one piece, the other piece is the housing trust, that's the opportunity. Because some projects are paying into the housing trust, we have, there's money in the housing trust that could. Can, continue to find grants and, and other things and right now the housing trust has been, um, there but kind of. Quiet and not really, when it was established, it was established, I think rightly for a specific purpose that. Really needs to be reevaluated what the makeup of it is to have the, the, the right, um. Group of expertise to help grow it and to create other opportunities.
And I think responding to what you said about there needs to be more emphasis on impacts. And then what you're saying is there needs to be more emphasis on implementation. I was going over the comments that were made at the community meeting and at the select board meeting. And the comments that are being made tonight are consistent with what was said at those meetings. And I do think that the housing plan does need to be stronger on the, on impacts and implementation. Even if the, um, new sections on impacts merely say that. Uh, as we go along with implementation, we have to consider the impacts and also mention the fact that the school department is doing this study. So I, I agree that we need to strengthen those areas in, in, in this report. By the way, it's one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven units, just to say, it's right in the first paragraph of the report.
I remember it's something close to that.
Yeah.
The, um. I, I, and it, I understand that with the complexity of this because of the. The plan in itself, that when you break it down into component pieces. Whether you're dealing with a specific project or whether you're dealing with a zoning change. As part of those natural processes, you know, we will talk about the, you know, the impacts. And, uh, and that's, and that's certainly understandable, a particular thing and I get that. To the point about the, the business district. I would, I would hope, and I think this is fairly consistent with colleagues of mine on the Council of Economic Advisers. That, and one thing that we've been saying on the C A for years is that with greater density. Residential density would come gra, a greater mix of the, of the retail. And, uh, a more vibrant mix, um. And I also think that that would be true, we do have businesses. From, from the funeral homes, from, is that May Street or Rosemary?
Got to May Street.
May Street, right, May, May Street to Rosemary.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All, you know, all the way and-
And that's included in the plan?
Yes.
That we, that we would not disallow. Mixed use.
Uh-
In other words, if we had-
I'm trying to remember what we say about that.
If we had three units of two hundred and, of two hundred units of housing in those areas. You're talking about seven hundred and fifty units of housing, not in one day, it may take. Many years, decades to come to fruition, but on the first floor, if you still had. You know, you know, a grocery store, if you still had a barber shop or you still had. A liquor store and you still had other retail, I think that, I think they would probably tend to come. Together, now, it's very different, you know, Madero's very different, there's no. You know, there's no, uh, retail there, there's no retail in the Kendrick, there's no retail in Charles River Landing, but. Uh, in terms of a, a vision, I would, I dis, I completely agree with, with, with your, with your, uh. Working group that we need to make by right. Density, I don't know that, but I wouldn't wanna preclude mixed use.
Um, I don't think we do preclude it in this, in this way, if we allow multifamily housing in this strip, for example, that we just now talking about. We have a provision in our bylaw that you can have mixed uses in a building, uh, there's more than one use in a building by special permit.
Yes.
Um, the difference between that strip and our downtown is that we have. Kind of a density bonus for mixed use where you can go up to four stories. Whereas for the, um, multifamily that we're talking about. Uh, uh, we're talking about copying our apartment A one zone that's in this bylaw now. We have several developments in our town that were built under it, it's by right, it's eighteen units per acre, it's three stories max. So that's what we're talking about, so, um, we wouldn't have that, uh, extra story, but otherwise you could do mixed use.
That's also in, correct me if I'm wrong, um.
Sorry, once, just for, to clarify. Could one story of retail on Highland Avenue and then three stories of residential?
No, two stories is the maximum building height in that district is three stories.
I would like to, I would like to see that raised, I would like specifically. To allow first floor retail. And three stories of housing, in part because if I remember correctly, and Artie, you're the engineer on the board. I doesn't, doesn't, isn't there a bit of a dip in Highland Avenue?
Well, it's going down from this.
It's going down towards Rosemary.
Yeah, it's going down and back up.
Yeah, exactly.
But are you referring, but are you then referring, for example, referring to this side of railroad track to the other side of railroad tracks?
I'm talking about between, I'm talking about between the railroad tracks and the high school. That section of Highland, you know, in this area, that's what I thought, because maybe there, because there's a bit of a dip.
Yeah, that what I don't know is what's on Garden Street, the other side, the other side of the railroad track, so.
I'm not talking about that part of it.
Well, okay, but, yeah, but, yeah, but Garden, but, yeah, but Garden Street goes down a little-
Single-family homes.
Yeah, it goes down a ways, parallels the, the railroad tracks for a little ways down there, behind, on the other side of railroad tracks, behind and under the buildings.
Oh, that, that if the single-family residents are then looking at a tower.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, 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 so I mean, certainly, certainly we know that, you know, Knights of Columbus and that, that building, the dental office. Certainly we know that that goes down quite a bit, I just don't know the elevation of the railroad tracks there and the elevation of the land, the houses on the other side.
That's valid.
So anyway, there's a question mark there, because I don't know.
So Jean knows this better than I do, but I know it also, we have to have a certain amount of contiguous, right?
Yes.
Yes, we have to.
And so that's why that area was also identified because we can-
How do you, if, if you, if you've got the lower strip and an upper strip. strip, and you're, and you're not, and you've got this middle section that you're, that's not, how is that contiguous?
We've got a way to do it.
I knew you did, Jean.
And that is to rezon our library.
Get out of town.
No, rezon our library for multifamily housing.
So we could have, we could have residential on top of it.
Not that it's going to happen, that's not anybody is ever going to develop it for multifamily housing, but that's how you make these zones contiguous.
So that counts, so that wouldn't be considered, wouldn't be considered a cheat?
You take Rosemary, Rosemary Lake Apartments, Rosemary Ridge, um, Hillside Avenue, industrial, and then you go up the hill across the tracks to the library, then you go across to Sudbury Farms, that's how we can do it.
I, I love the ingenuity. I do need to call out, I.
Paul is probably not feeling great.
Yeah, Paul, yeah.
How much more do we?
Yeah.
Oh, Paul.
Paul, you want to check out, buddy?
We're, we're moving through.
I think you might have checked out already.
Well, he's there.
Does he want some, do you want some, do you want to say something, Paul, here?
Paul, you want to check out?
I said I'm listening.
Uh-huh, okay.
I'm listening to all these comments.
Do you have any comments on the housing plan in its form?
No, to be honest, I really haven't had a chance to, to focus in on it.
I understand. I do lastly want to make a comment, that in today's Globe, there was an excellent article written about the implementation of the MBTA Communities. And what I'd like to do, Alex, is I'd like to ask you to, uh, if we're allowed to on the, on the town, on our site, is to pull a copy of that.
Put, put that in our Housing Plan Working Group document.
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
Is that okay?
I don't see why not, that article.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, do you want it on the screen right now?
No, no, no.
No, 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 just to put a link to it.
Yeah, so people.
Oh, on the webpage.
In the Housing Plan Working Group.
Yeah.
Because I think it's, I think it was, I think it was a good discussion about what towns that are choosing not to adopt it, and how caught off guard they were, and, and the benefits of conformity, I think is also important. I just thought there was, there was a good amount of information in there.
There was, and it really was, there was an implication of criticism for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, because frankly, I, and I think Karen Soonberg said, we didn't realize that that particular grant was at, at risk.
Risk, exactly.
Until very recently, we, we went to a webinar on it.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, and they didn't, but, but nevertheless, our planning staff knew what to do at every step of the way, so that we didn't get caught in that trap.
So I, I, I do commend the thoroughness of the work of, of everybody that was involved, just the same way that I commend your ingenuity on how to solve that little middle section. Um, uh, I, and I think that other, other communities did not have the same resources that Needham has had, and have felt caught off guard. I think that is a valid criticism. We will also have a new governor, and, you know, they, she may shift some priorities in the implementation as well, so, but I think that we have a number of items here. I want to, Lee, make sure that.
Chair?
Yes, Paul.
Um, just putting a link to the Boston Globe article may, may, may not work, because I believe.
You have to be a subscriber.
That if somebody clicks on the link and they don't have a subscription to the Globe, they won't be able to open the article.
Can you do a PDF or is there a copyright issue with that?
We, I wonder.
I don't even know if I can open it.
So, I, I mean, I, I can download it, but I wonder, Lee, if there's, maybe Cindy might be able to reach out to the publisher to ask if we're, you know, if they would give us permission for that purpose.
Chair, we can check.
If that's possible, that would be great. Um, I, and, and then I do, I do want to continue to embark on our planning phase, and I would love to see us, you know, take, plan this out, excuse me, for, you know, for the next, uh, 2023 and 2024.
I think also, um, taking the Climate Action Plan groups, um, some thoughts on that, that might be a kind of low-hanging fruit.
Yes, agreed.
That, that can happen sooner than later.
Exactly.
So I sent the whole group the meeting notes from our, from our subcommittee.
From the CA, from the Climate Action?
Right, we still have to go back to the whole Climate Action Plan, but I know that Stephen Frail had recommended that if there were things that were no-brainers, that we should, we should talk about it, so I sent it to everyone here.
Including a solar canopy by.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, that's, well, that's, those were the first two items, we had five items. Um, and I sent it to everyone, and, and it's, I mean, it's a public meeting, so, you know, we did it so anybody can, who's here can watch it. Um, but I, we identified five things, so as we're looking at implementation of these things, um, there are a couple that, the sol- solar for, for civic, commercial, and multifamily versus solar for residential, we made them two separate items.
Right, right.
And so I think those are things that we should discuss when we're discussing this. And then there's, um, we also support, um, would support a master plan to, to talk about, you know, a lot of different items, and then there's the, the big house kind of review, which should be separate from the master plan, because it's, it's, it's kind of prickly, and they've already had some big house reviews. Um, and so I, I think we have a plan, they asked us to come back with, you know, several priorities, and we have the five priorities that we, and Lee is part of this committee, um, the subcommittee that I'm leading, and I know that already you're leading another one.
The natural resources one, and we had, we kind of had, you know, basically tree-related.
Right.
You know, tree-related, then we have kind of compost-related, then we have a couple of items.
So, Lee, I, um, I can't remember if we, if we talked about this, but I, I would like to, I would like to see us, um, because it sounds like the, the select board, you know, is, concurs with this, I would like to get the band back together for the tree working group. Can you reach out to the select board's office to see what would be required? I would, I, on this, I would, I would prefer a, a smaller working group, uh, that could work in a shorter timeframe, if you have some comments on that.
Sorry, the other piece that we talked about, which I think is a no-brainer, is the application process and changes to the, so there were, there were five items, one, one was solar for, for civic, multi-institutional, you know, multifamily.
Yeah.
Solar for residential, the third was the application process, making sure that we have, you know, any, any criteria that we want to add to it, and then the master plan, and then the big house. Those were the, um, the five things that we identified, knowing that the last two take a lot of work, but that the top three would be the no-brainers.
And you've got some initiatives too, so.
And then.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, our top, so we, we had, we had, give or take forty-six line items, somewhere around there, and a number of those line items were all related to a similar topic, and we all, we all independently voted on everything, and trees came out.
Number one.
The number one, basically, actually came out the number one.
So I, so, I, you know, it, it would, I'd like to see us have, you know, probably one or two members from this board, one or two members maybe from the select board, we would need, uh, you know, maybe the building commissioner, but certainly the, uh, the arborist, town arborist, um, and whoever else, uh, there may be a financial impact to this, uh, so we may need someone from FinCom, but hopefully somewhere around that size, Lee, would be what we're looking for. Um, anyone else have any other comments before I move on to the minutes? So with regard to, uh, to the minutes, Jean, you had five comments.
Yes.
And I'm.
Let me see if I can go through them quickly.
I've got recommendations for you for each of them.
Okay, great, let's just go through them then.
All right, so on page one, your first one.
Yes.
Uh, you're right, it is redevelopment.
Okay.
So that's done.
Redevelopment, all right.
Page two.
And then to, it seems to me that the reference to TDB.
Yes, meant to be.
Must have been incorrect, and they must have meant.
Correct.
TDM, Transportation Demand Management.
You're correct. And then, uh, on, uh, the page four, I think, uh, it accounts for people, uh, accounts for people working, uh, uh, working remotely, and a percentage of people commuting to and from work via public transit.
Okay, he, so it should be worded to say, could you please say how it should be worded, that sentence?
Yeah, may I? Kind of.
Oh, just write it in.
Uh, so.
I'm thinking you are.
So, uh, he feels a one to three hundred count, accounts for people, I can email this to you, accounts for people working remotely and a percentage of people commuting to and from work via public transit.
Okay, um, if you want to just, um.
I can do it after the meeting, I can.
All right, oh, we can just do it after the meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Just so Alex gets it, that's the thing.
You got it? Wow, already on it.
All right then.
Thanks, Alex.
And that's, that takes care of it, right?
And then, uh, on page six, you were, you're correct, it was Mr. Wolfson.
Mr. Wolfson, right.
And then on page, uh, page eight, the board is the State Ethics Commission.
Eight, uh, a complaint was filed with, yes, the State Ethics.
Ethics Commission.
Right, I remembered that, ethics.
Does anyone else have any other comments on?
You got that, Alex? So we're all set then, Alex, right?
Oh.
Okay, so, uh, with those changes, um, I move that we accept the minutes of the September seventh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, planning board meeting as redlined.
Uh, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spada?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we've, uh, approved the minutes of September seventh as redlined. Uh, do my colleagues have any reports? Lee, do you have any reports?
Yes, just to let you know that, um, I think Jean and Natasha talked on the, talked about the work for the Housing Plan Working Group, um, the last, well, the next meeting of the Housing Plan Working Group is going to be held this Thursday, um, and I think they hope to get through any plan modi-, any modifications to the plan that came from this board, as well as comments that we had received at the community meeting. And I think we're probably thinking that there's going to be just one meeting after that for the group to get together, uh, to ratify that plan, so that it will be finalized by the end of the year. Um, and the other thing that I'm working on, um, is the action plan, which is due to DHCD, um, by the end of January, um, is a part, is a part of our compliance effort with the MBTA guidelines. Um, and we anticipate, I'm working with Katie King on this, getting, uh, the town's response of, in the outline of that action plan, and presenting it informally, probably to the planning board, the select board, um, sometime in the middle of January, prior to its actual submission, uh, to the state by the end of the month.
Good.
Um, and just to keep on your radar screen for the planning board meeting next week, um, we hope to have, um, one hundred West Street back in front of us. Um, I don't know if you remember, they were looking at revising their proposal to address some of the concerns that the board had, um, regarding the absence of any really affordable units as a function of the modifications they were making. So that's on the calendar for next month, a few weeks from, two weeks from tonight.
Thank you very much.
And on that meeting, you know, um, Dave, there was some reason, which escapes me, why we were meeting at seven thirty. So I'm just letting everybody know.
I do.
I think it was one of you guys had a conflict, it doesn't matter, but I just didn't want anyone to get hurt.
Seven thirty on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Paul, you, you got that, Paul? Seven thirty on the nineteenth?
Seven thirty on the nineteenth.
Good. Uh, we have no correspondence, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.